Okay, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, July 24th. And we're on summer schedule, so we're meeting every other week. And we have a very long agenda tonight. And I see we have three folks signed up for public comment. Because we have a very long agenda, I'm going to be, I think we're going to be here till 11 or 12 o'clock tonight. So I'm going to be holding strictly the public comments to the stated five minutes. So let me just. Okay, so any announcements?
I've got two announcements. One, a reminder that the COMEV project, the BU Bridge closure begins this Thursday. So I would urge people to check out the mass website for more specific schedules and maybe some suggestions on alternative routes. And then secondly, I had the pleasure, along with our chair, of attending a groundbreaking ceremony last Thursday in the pouring rain of the so-called River Road Hotel. So we're, we've moved dirt, things are, started to happen, and that's exciting for me. It's sort of the next step in a process that's been going on after 18-plus months.
I'll just say that the Climate Action Committee met last night. We are excited to be coming before this board on August the 7th for a presentation about the Climate Action Plan. And it's got many, many parts, but we'll try to distill it for you so that it makes sense. And just so you understand that it is a document that's amenable, easily amenable to changes. I mean, it's not something that's written in stone. But, you know, we're glad to get to this point.
I'll also mention, it was reported in the press that there was a ruling in the Hancock Village case against the neighbors who were suing in favor of the developer. So stuff is going to be happening down there, and we'll see, we'll see what that is. Okay, public comment. Mr. Pinches.
About a month ago, I made a public comment down there recording the Babcock Street project, suggesting that it was a much better and more cost-effective way of dealing it. There was some investigation. I got a very nice response from Peter Ditto, which was technically accurate. I know what he's talking about. The problem was, they don't know what I'm talking about. So I would ask you, on item number M, as in Massachusetts, on the agenda tonight down there of awarding a contract, I would ask you to postpone that to the next meeting so we can basically talk about what I am talking about, so that we can possibly save the taxpayers a chunk of money. The two-week delay, which we're probably going to hear lots of horror stories about the repercussions and all of that down there, would not be detrimental to the town, the contractor, the neighbors, or everything else. In fact, what I'm proposing down there, they might be able to get the whole thing done in what is now, I think, referred to as Phase 1 this fall, instead of dividing up into Phase 1 and Phase 2 and spreading the whole thing out all over the place. So again, what I'm suggesting is that you postpone it so we can have a discussion about the whole thing, so everybody knows exactly what's going on, and an opportunity to save the taxpayers, and a lot of other benefits too, including environmental benefits, a faster project, more cost-effective, less traffic disruption, less, you know, consternation of consternation is the right word, with the neighbors and everything else, police detail costs, you know what's involved when they start talking about a project which may run six months, particularly on Babcock Street, which you know is a very busy street. So again, I would ask you to postpone your vote on awarding the contract, and so we can sit down, go through the whole thing, and you can make a decision. And I think I can show you down to what I'm talking about is a benefit to everybody and detrimental to no one.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ruth Ann Snyder, Precinct 6. I came to Town Hall today to get some advice and guidance on a warrant article I want to bring forward in, in the fall. And it has to do with increasing the diversity of the workforce of the people that we hire to build a high school. I would like the workforce to reflect the demographics of our aspiration for our own employees, for town side and for, and for school side. So I came forward, and I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Maisak, who took me into his office unscheduled, and I'm Jonathan Simpson. And so I look forward to bringing this forward to the town. And I thought I would come and tell you this evening, because as luck would have it, you're scheduled to appoint the project supervisor for the high school tonight. So I thought I could stay and eyeball him and come and just give you a heads up what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the brief public comment tonight, because, as I said, we have a long agenda. We have one more. Mr. Curlo?
I have a voice, Curlo. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. What I'd like to speak to is 1,250 members of my local and fellow steelworker local that have been locked out of work without health care since July 1st. And what I wish to speak about is memorandums that are taking place in City of Boston, Burntree, Lowell, Avril, Malden, Medford, and what it amounts to is stopping National Grid from doing any work in the cities and towns due to safety, with the exception of emergency grade-one leaks. That, that's all that's being allowed in these cities and towns. We're going across our 36 cities and towns and asking for that. Now please, just bear with me while I try to just tell you a little bit about National Grid and public safety. Since 2011, I have written the CEO, Steve Holliday, and current CEO, John Pettigrew, along with Tom King, President of US Operations, and Dean Seavey, who's President of US Operations, current. Dozens of letters, all the letters have dealt with safety. And I can tell you that National Grid is a broken company. There are computers in their trucks that come out to Brookline and other towns. They, they have the maps in there, "We need to find a gas leak." We're incapable of finding the mains and services a lot of times, because these computers are down for one hour, two hours, three hours. Sometimes they're down for one day, sometimes they're down for three days. Inspectors in 2011 actually was the reason I wrote the first letter, due to the fact that in Belmont, Mass., they buried a main 18 inches down there, and they had to replace the whole main. They had no pipeline inspectors at all in all the work that they did. Pipeline inspectors are still a problem to this day. We have over 100 contractors out with only 13 inspectors. It's clearly not enough to see what's getting buried in the ground each day. Single services, when people want oil to their house, they have not been inspected at all by any type of pipeline inspectors from the union since National Grid arrived. And due to that fact, we've had water mains that were tapped. In Whitman, Mass., we've had low-pressure fittings put on high-pressure gas, which blew apart once it was tapped, causing the fire department to come down there and blow in rust all over the buildings and whatever is in that rust, PCBs, benzene, or any other, anything else like that. At 471 Tremont Street in Boston, we've had a leak go on for 70 days with steel plates on the road. Under those steel plates were readings of gas of 40%, 50%, 65% gas. The fire department, it's constantly coming every day to, because of calls of gas, that was not fixed. And when it was finally fixed, it was fixed by the use of contractors to do that work after 70 days. There's no reason for that when we work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. 499 Commercial Street in Weymouth, Mass., they have a contractor that came in to mark the main. He marked the main, high-pressure main, and he left. He was supposed to generate a ticket to a foreign open inspector to watch the dig that would, that would follow up. That ticket was never generated. And due to the fact that that ticket was never generated, by coincidence, one of our workers went by there that knew the job, and he saw a contractor excavating on the opposite side of the street. He stopped him because it was a 137-pound gas main there. He said to him, "What are you doing?" He said, "We're just going to tap this water main and put, put a water service into that house." If he did that, that flame would have went up half the length of the prudential, and he would have been killed. We, in turn, because he didn't mark the main, and what happened there, we as a, we as a union went to the DPU. We spent tens of thousands of our own money at the DPU, and we didn't go there for wages, pensions, or health care. We went there over public safety. And when we brought that fact up about Commercial Street, which I told you, we've had Vice President of National Grid tell us that the main was not damaged. We did discovery, and three days later, they had to come back and admit that they lied in regards to that main being damaged.
One minute.
In Lexington, gas flowing for three hours due to contractors not marking that, five hours on another job. And the LNG tank over there in Commercial Point, the security there is absolutely unbelievable, that people are sleeping, not doing perimeter checks, smoking on the job and everything else. I don't have enough time. What I told you was the tip of the iceberg in regards to the letters that I, I've written you. And I, I plead with you, I plead with you to not let National Grid in here and bury their mistakes while 1,250 people are out of work that do this for a living. And the other thing that I would say is, when we do get back to work, we will continue this, as we have continued it with the DPU and everywhere else, to provide safe gas work for the public. I appreciate you listening to me, and I, I will try to move, I guess they call it a warrant up here, that we have to get a warrant in to, to move, to get a memorandum or resolution in regards to stopping National Grid. Is that correct in saying that?
For town meeting, if you want to go that route.
Say that, please.
If, you can file a warrant article at town meeting.
At a town meeting. And that has to be filed before August 2nd, or after August 2nd?
August 30th.
Before August 30th.
For a town meeting warrant article.
Although, what you may want to do is give us a list of those examples that you mentioned, so we can look at it and...
Are any of those in Brookline?
Out of these here?
Yeah, none of those that you cited were in Brookline.
No, there were, there were other towns, but I will, I'll look at my notes and see if there is stuff in Brookline, and if there is stuff directly in Brookline. But I, but I can tell you that any pipes that's being buried in the ground, when you don't have inspectors watching it, you're, you're creating a, a public hazard. That's what you're doing.
So the information I have right now just is, there are three places National Grid is working in town. One is a, two are grade-one emergency leaks. One is right here at Harvard Square, and another is at 46 Seaver Street. And then National Grid has applied for a permit to abandon service at a private home at the request of a private homeowner. They haven't applied for any other permits during the lockout period, and that will, the Engineering Division will continue to monitor the crews that are working currently. But I think from our perspective, it's in our interest to make sure the emergency leaks are...
We agree. We do not disagree. If there's an emergency, a grade-one leak, somebody has to deal with it. We totally agree. It's, it's all the other work that we, we believe that needs to be watched extremely closely, and we believe that we're the ones to do that work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now let's delve into this agenda. The miscellaneous portion goes up to the letter S, which is highly unusual. Let's see, and some of these are quite consequential, as you see. So the first item is a question of the chair, authorizing the chair to execute contract with Briely Associates to provide peer review services to the Zoning Board of Appeals in connection with the comprehensive permit submitted by Chestnut Hill Realty relative to the Pudding Stone case. And that's Hancock 2, as I've been calling it. Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you, Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. This is for peer review services relative to geotechnical and blasting plans.
Right. And these are, this is being paid for by Chestnut Hill?
By Chestnut Hill Realty. And the second part of my request is to authorize me to accept a check from Chestnut Hill Realty to pay for these services.
That should be uncontroversial, to accept the check.
You'd think.
Questions from the board? We've been through this a few times.
Who's, who's doing the peer review, just out of curiosity?
Jay, Jay Perkins, professional engineer with Briely Associates, came highly recommended by the blasting expert we used for Pudding Stone, who has since retired, for, sorry, resident of South Brookline, who has retired.
Right. Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll move that we authorize the chair to execute a contract with Briely Associates to provide peer review services to the Zoning Board of Appeals in connection with comprehensive permit, application submitted by Chestnut Hill Realty relative to the Pudding Stone case. I'll also move that we accept the check for $79.80 from Chestnut Hill Realty to pay the fee for that, for the peer review services by Briely Associates. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next item up is a question of accepting a grant in the amount of $56.25 from the State Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY18 Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Enforcement Program. Chief.
How are you doing? Chief Morgan, Brookline Police. I just have a couple, I just have a couple of things that mentioned before. Again, I know you're real busy. One of the things I just want to bring you, is put it on social media, if you didn't see it. We had a young lady from Brookline, Brookline High School student, who is a member of the Brookline Police Explorers, who was, we work with Boston Police Explorers. And she had, was nominated myself as a graduate of the FBI National Academy as the, to attend the youth, the youth police initiative to the FBI. It's Youth Leadership, actually, Youth Leadership Program. She was nominated to go through a fact-finding and interview process with all the other candidates from New England. She was the one person that was picked from New England to go down to, and to FBI Academy Chronicle for a week of training that simulated a 12-week training that I went through many years ago. Her name is Yana LaBazza Wen. She's 16 years old, she's a 3.9 GPA student from Brookline High School, and she still continues to very enjoy. I spoke to her afterwards, she had been very enjoyable to town, down there for the physical fitness, the education, and stuff like that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's something that's very positive, happened with one of our students from the Police Explorer Scouts. Additionally, we had one of our officers, Detective Julie McDonald, who's recognized by the Mass Association of Women in Law Enforcement. She received a Spirit of Amalia Award at the annual convention for excellence in performance, and to be awarded to a woman with the law enforcement field who has distinguished herself through superior attention to duty, her outstanding investigative effort, at least the identification and location arrest of a major criminal, criminal activity. And she basically got, for all of the, as far as things she's done with domestic violence, elder abuse, and some financial crimes. So that's one thing. Something that might be related to your neighborhood, there was an armed robbery, a mass armed robbery at the One Stop Market on Cypress Street, Cypress High Street, that subject was identified, and we're in the process of prosecuting him with a joint investigation with Norfolk and Suffolk PA's office. That happened back in, she was just arrested recently. He had done a string of 23 to 24s, with, back, I think approximately in late March or April that, that occurred, so.
You know, I can see it right outside my living room window.
Yeah, so that's why I brought to your attention. He's, he's currently in custody and proceeding with the charges. Final thing is, I've got an email on a new park dedication that was worked with the DPW and the opens, and the parks in open space, next to the police department, we took some rundown, you know, area there, made it to what I guess we call the pocket park, and we're going to be doing a dedication of that next week, on Thursday, the 2nd of, 2nd of August, along with our police commendations at that time. We're doing a joint thing.
Hopefully, you'll have good weather.
Well, hopefully. So now we'll get into the grants.
Okay.
Okay, so the first answer question is for accepting a grant from $5,600 for bicycle and safety enforcement from the state, and this grant will be used for the police department to pay the officers over time to enforce bicycle and pedestrian safety. And also, there's an additional proportion of that grant that can be used for equipment such as barricades, lighting, signs, and stuff like that. So that's, that's the one in total amount of $56.25.
Okay, why don't you do the next one also?
Okay. So the next one is also is the FY18 Traffic Enforcement Grant. That's a little bit different, that's for motor vehicle violations versus the pedestrian and the bicycle. That's an amount of $1,650 that we use to, for a pair of drivers, the August drives, so we'll get pulled over, campaign.
Is the Mass Emergency Management Agency yours too?
Yes, yes, that is, yeah. So that's, that's money we're going to use to get all the CERT class going, for 10-week programs, if I was, to enable us to add other, provide citizens to our CERT team that reactivate in emergencies and help out with the police and emergency services.
Okay, so we have three grants before us. Any questions on any of the three grants? Okay. I will move the three grants in an omnibus fashion. I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $56.25 from the State Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY18 Bicycle Safety Enforcement Grant Program. I'll also move that we accept the grant in the amount of $1,650 from the State Executive Office of Public Safety and Security.
$1,500.
Oh, and 50 cents?
$1,500.50, even.
Is 50 cents in there? I don't see.
I'll give you 50 cents.
Your memo, we got 50 cents.
Oh, okay. So I'll, I'll move fif, I'll move it with 50 cents.
We won't spend the 50 cents if you don't want to.
Can't, can't lose the 50 cents. $1,650 and 50 cents from the State Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY18 Traffic and Equipment Grant Program. And I'll also move that we accept a grant in the amount of $49.84 and 80 cents from the Mass Emergency Management Agency's SHSP slash CCP Grant Program. That's a mouthful. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you, Sheila Wowe.
Okay. Okay, now we've got some of our building projects that we're going to be dealing with. And the first one is a change order to a decrease. Oh, this is good news. To the contract with Shawma Design and Construction, connection with renovations and additions at the Coolidge Corner School formerly known as the Devotion School.
Good evening, Tony Giggly with the Building Department, as you said, Mr. Chairman. This is a change order number 24 with a net decrease, if approved, to the contract of 21 items total in the changer. I can run through each of them, or take questions on any that you, whatever you wish.
I don't think you need to run through them. Do any of these affect, will any of these affect our MSBA reimbursement?
We don't know that until the MSBA reviews. They review every change order item.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Heller.
I'm assuming we're still on time and we're on budget.
There's nuanced answers to that, which I will, I will give you very, very briefly. Yes, we are on budget. And, and the contract date of substantial completion is July 31st. Now, the bad news is, I, it's my opinion, the contractor won't meet that date. However, it is my opinion, we will be in school on time, which means that we'll be, I believe the contractor will be working with us right up until basically Labor Day. But we've adjusted other schedules for moving and what have you. Furniture's basically all in. The FF, the technologies, much of it's in, all the network equipment. A lot of the touchscreen TVs are all going in. The contractor plans to get a temporary occupancy permit this Friday. That's what they're aiming for. The elevator's slated to be inspected by the state on Monday. The fire alarm system and sprinkler systems and kitchen were all inspected by either the Fire Department or Health Department. And I think in all of those cases, there were a few little items, but nothing major. So there's still a significant amount of work to do, but as I said, I, it's my opinion that we'll get in on time. We've just had to adjust some schedules on some of our other activities.
I saw some comments on social media asking people to stay off the field.
Yeah.
So does that mean the fencing has come down?
Yeah, the fencing has come down because the contractor needs to finish the site work, including the permanent fencing. And so it's a, I won't say an attractive nuisance, but it's attractive. And so, you know, people do wander onto the site. And so the contractor's looking at ways to discourage them, including asking some of the neighbors to spread the word out to try and keep people off the field.
Any other questions for Mr. Giggly while we have them? You've been on this project for how long now?
Years.
Yeah.
Well, I've been very fortunate. It's a good project. Come take a look sometime. Hopefully, you'll enjoy, you'll like what you see, hopefully.
Okay, well, I can't wait. So I will move that we approve change order number 24 decrease in the amount of $142,441.49 to the contract with Shawma Design and Construction, connection with renovations and additions to the Coolidge Corner School. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay. Mr. Masak, you're the next one up, and this is approving an amendment, an increase in the amount of $13 million, thirteen, $50,215, to be exact, to the William Ron contract, and that's the design services contract at the high school.
Ray Masak, Building Department. Yes, initially, we did the schematic design for a million and a half dollars, and this amendment was contemplated through the town meeting vote and the vote that was taken by the taxpayers. This is just a continuation of the services. So, we had an initial, again, schematic design phase, and when we negotiated the schematic design phase, we also negotiated it as, the final design as a percentage of overall construction, which is typical. So, it was 10% is what we negotiated, so it was easy. So, when we came up with the final numbers for the construction number, it's just 10% of the construction number, the MBTA work, which is below the line, and some additional, some additional MBTA work required by the architect. So, that's how we came up with the 13 million.
Looking at the materials, I'm excited to see particular attention being paid to the MBTA, part of the project, which, is it telling me that discussions are going well with the MBTA and?
Well, what, yes. So, we had a meeting, I went to that meeting, and they did assign a project manager, which was very encouraging. I'm not going to do any discouraging words, but there are two groups, and we were working with the real estate group, now we're working on the capital side, and they assigned a project manager, and that's very encouraging. So, there was some work we needed to do, and the project manager on the capital side has been really pushing the T to allow us to get on property, to do survey work, acoustical work, and some geotechnical work. So, that was very encouraging. And AECOM, the consultant that was hired by the architect, some of the ex-employees from the T work for AECOM, which is also a plus, so they know the idiosyncrasies, if I might say, of the T, and how my, how to work best with the T. So, when we had our first kickoff, everybody was encouraged. I'll just leave it at that, very encouraged.
And it's, and some of the people working on our project have worked on projects such as the Green Line extension through Somerville.
They're, they're very well versed in the T construction.
I will say that one of the names that jumped out at me when I was reviewing the packet was Frank DePaula, who works at AECOM, who was, until I think somewhat recently, a very senior member of the Mast dot team, including the former general manager of the MBTA. So, I am confident that negotiations are taking place at the highest level of that, that public institution.
There seems to be a sense of urgency from their side, which is encouraging.
Well, that's good, because we have a sense of urgency too.
Yeah, maybe I like to sleep at night.
We share, we share and share alike.
Right.
I'll, I'll just say on behalf of the, myself as a co-chair, and I believe I speak for the other co-chairs, George Toll and Susan Wolf Ditkoff, is that we are pleased with the progress that's being made. There are a lot of, a significant amount of meetings around this project, and a significant amount of thought, and Bill, Bill Ron and associates have done, and also our owner's project manager have done excellent jobs. Now, we're bringing on Skanska. I think the architect has brought on AECOM, as you see in the, to do some of the design work that will be required. So, it's, it's exciting, I think it's really going to happen. We're going to knock on some wood, and.
Yes, as you said, we've had 120 meetings so far, and we'll probably have another 120 meetings going forward until we start construction next spring.
So, I will move that we approve amendment number one, an increase in the amount of $13,050,0215 to the contract with William Ron Associates for continuation of design services through the, through project completion in connection with the Brookline High School expansion and renovation project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Oh, and you're up again.
I'm up for.
And this is a question of approving amendment number one, an increase in the amount of $2,398,230 to the contract with Hill International for continuation of OPM, that's owner's project manager?
Services.
Services through project completion in connection with the Brookline High School project. Mr. Masak?
Yes, I negotiated this contract. Originally, they wanted two teams, we, we brought it back to one team, and so it's far within our budget. There is a subtle nuance to this amendment. The overall owner project management services for Project A, which is Cypress, and Project B, which is the main campus, goes through the end of construction. Working with the Building Commission member, George Cole, we decided on the MBTA work that we just do it through the end of, sorry, we do that through the end of design, and once we understood better what the MBTA work, we then negotiate and complete the owner's project manager through the end of construction, because we really don't understand what the needs are of the MBTA work.
So, you'll be back at that point for more?
I guess that's what I'm trying to say, yes. I will be back.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Pardon me if I don't understand some of the details of this, but in our procurement policies, there's a requirement that contractors have firms with action policies and diversity in their employment practices. How do you follow up on those types of policies in a contract like this? Am I asking the question correctly, or?
They, they agree to not discriminate, but we don't have set goals or actions in our contracts to be, can you rephrase this?
Well, I guess I'm asking in connection with Ruth Ann Snyder's.
That's something that will need to be worked on in future contracts, setting, tracking the diversity of the workforce.
Yeah. Well, town meeting's probably going to be bird dogging that, assuming that the Warren Article passes, and, you know, we're always concerned about those issues.
That's a big issue, is how do we track it? What's the mechanism? What's the paperwork? I mean, and then, I'm sure that'll be part of the Warren Article as well.
Okay. Any other questions? So, I'll move that we approve the amendment number one, an increase in the amount of $2,398,230 to the contract with Hill International for continuation of OPM services through project completion in connection with the Brookline High School expansion renovation project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we'll just note, it's not part of the motion, just note for our information, that Mr. Masak will be back for additional OPM contract money for, once we understand the, what's happening with the MBTA. Okay, and this is the, I was going to say, this is the last one that you have, but I don't think it is. So, the next one is a question of awarding and executing a construction management contract in the amount of $476,928 with Skanska AS, USA Building Inc. in connection with the Brookline High School expansion and renovation project. And I presume this is like the first of what's going to be many.
You are correct.
Because this is, this is the vehicle by which most of the money in the high school project is going to be spent.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Masak?
Chapter 149A of the state laws allows a municipality to do CM at risk, and that's construction management at risk, and what that allows is, allows us to have a contractor brought on early. So, to start the process, you have to go to the IG's office, and they approve the process, which they did for the town. We then issue what's called a request for qualification, and then we shortlist, and then we issue a request for proposals. There was a group that selected Skanska after almost an all-day interviews with four different firms. And the RFP process, first you interview, and you select on qualifications, then you open up the envelope, which has their proposal for the pre-construction services, and they just so happened to be the lowest qualified. Their bid was the lowest out of all. So, pre-construction service, all that means is they're going to help us set up the, if we have to do early packages, help us with estimates, look at the project, see how constructible, and just aid us as a contractor would in the design process. And that's what's really a great part of CM at risk, allowing the contractor to be on early to review the process.
Okay. Mr. Green?
Following up on my previous question, which may have been more appropriate with respect to this item, I just note that article, note for Ruth Ann Snyder's information, Article 13 does provide for minority business enterprise and women business enterprise participation goals of 10.4% on these contracts. So, that's there. I think the issue still is, how do we follow up and make sure that, to an extent reasonable, those goals are met?
Correct. There's two parts of it. It's the business end of it, which is the minority business enterprise and the women business enterprise, and then the diversity of the workforce itself, which we discussed. And, and what did we say? The aspirational.
Right.
How they aspire, and in state contracts, they are monitoring it, and that's something that, once we get the Warren Article and better understand it, that's probably, then probably what we'll be doing, is monitoring the workforce and see what the diversity is.
There's also an article, an Article 9, equal employment opportunity, non-discrimination and affirmative action clause. So, I'm sure that, this is a national company, and I'm sure that they have a lot of different, and I'm sure, and they do work all over the state, so I'm sure that they are, you know, as much as they, they should be in compliance with what the state requires at the very least.
Of course. This is not my area of expertise, so I'm sorry if I'm stumbling a little bit on this issue.
Any other comments or questions related to this contract? I will therefore move that we award and execute a construction management contract in the amount of $476,938, $928 with Skanska USA Building Inc. in connection with the Brookline High School expansion and renovation project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the next item is, we're on item aye, and miscellaneous is going through S. Question of awarding and executing a designer services contract in the amount of $50,330 with Russo Bar Associates in connection with the golf course. The golf course house roof project and fire station number seven repointing. Mr. Masak?
Yes, Russo Bar, we had a committee of seven, and Russo Bar was selected as the most qualified firm to do this work, and this is the first year of a three-year contract. So, this is the amendment for the golf course roof, roof, which was desperately needed, and repointing work at fire station. This is a continuing appropriation for both building envelope and the roofing work, the 30-year plan that we've put forward.
Okay. Any questions on this item? And I'll move that we award and execute a designer services contract in the amount of $50,330 with Russo Bar Associates in connection with the golf course clubhouse roof project and the fire station seven repointing project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the next item, you're still with us, Mr. Masak?
I'm trying.
Um, is a question of appointing members to serve on a committee of seven in regards to the Driscoll School expansion project, and this is the committee of seven that will be helping to select the designer firm for the Driscoll School.
That is correct.
Anything to add?
The packages are due in this Thursday, and we've set two dates, one to do the shortlist and one to do the interviews.
Okay.
Which was really great, that people, we found time.
Right, yeah, it was, the scheduling was challenging, and select person.
And I benefited.
Right, select person Hamilton will be the board's representative and chair of the committee. I have volunteered to represent this board on the building committee, once the designer firm is chosen. I was hoping to start my participation with the committee of seven, but just the timing didn't work out.
You've got lots of experience.
No, not really. So, I'll move that we appoint, well, we appoint the, the whole committee.
That is correct.
So, the committee of seven will, I move that we appoint Karen Brzelski, George Cole and Nathan Peck from the Building Commission, David Pollak, Helen Shalupski, Susan Wolf Ditkoff from the School Committee, and then Heather Hamilton from the Select Board. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item is a question of executing a contract with Kloppfer Martin Design Group, KMDG, in the amount of $140,000 for landscape architectural structural engineering services at Lars Anderson Park. Ms. Gallantine?
Good evening, Erin Gallantine, Director of Parks and Open Space. So, what I have before you is a contract that we're looking to award and execute. KMDG was also our very successful team that worked with us on the Fisher Hill Reservoir design development, and they are now, they've taken up where Vic Walker left off. He was our former landscape architect for Lars Anderson Park, and KMDG is now helping us with the master plan and moving forward, looking to the next 20 years. So, with this contract, we'll be looking to construct the renovation reconstruction of the Tempiero, fondly known as the Temple of Love, the Causeway, the bridge and associated landscape improvements. I'll just say that this contract includes structural engineering, building and monument conservation services, civil engineering, some aqua engineering as well, that's the fountain, because we're looking to make sure that we have appropriate oxygen in the pond itself, and structural survey.
Sounds like exciting work. Ah, Mr. Green?
I don't mean to lawyerly nitpick.
But you will.
But, there's something in here that just looks bizarre. Do you know what the principal place of business of this firm is?
Do I know?
The principal place of business of the firm?
The principal place of business is on Cambridge Street in Boston, Massachusetts.
Okay. The reason why I've mentioned or asked that is governing law, shall be governed by the law and effective landscape architects' principal place of business. That is not normally what we say, it should be Massachusetts.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if that's a big enough issue to.
I did have this reviewed in detail, we actually kept all of the lining through it, so that. We actually kept all of the lining through it, so that town council's office was reviewed as to form.
I would ask town council why it's not Massachusetts that they, you know, state themselves.
And it is taken, the template that they use is the American Society of Landscape Architects' template.
Their address is listed on the front page.
It doesn't say that that's their principal place of business.
You're right.
And, you know, I don't think a contract like this, it really makes a big difference. But, I mean, it's the type of thing that, you know, if we ever do get into a dispute, could be very problematic.
So one thing that I actually think is a point well taken, because we're in conversations now about talking about a standard template across the board for public works projects. And namely, I'm looking to start with parks and open space projects, because we're, in essence, kind of editing all of these contracts that come through, and we'd really like to standardize them across the board. So I'll take that up and we'll kind of put that into consideration with what will ultimately be the town's contract form.
Based on my experience, we should always be careful about someone else's template contract, because, you know, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with, you know, our situation or our project. So I think that we didn't do that here, so.
I'm very comfortable with our working relationship with this company, and that legal has looked at it, but I'll bring that up with them.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Just, okay, just finding my place. I'll move that we award and execute a contract with KMDG in the amount of $140,000 for landscape architectural and structural engineering services in connection with the renovation and reconstruction of the Lars Anderson Park Tempieto, Causeway and Bridge and associated landscape improvements project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you.
Oh, and you've got more. We have an extra work order for work done by Ronald Marini Corp. in connection with the Emerson Garden Project, which is a beautiful project. It was a wonderful opening a few weeks ago. And I just, I came by there on the way over, and it's, the neighborhood has embraced it. It's, lots of kids were in the playground. It was just, just fun to see. Now we can only hope the grass takes.
Yes, that's, that's right. So this is an extra work order to close out the construction contract with Marini. Some items associated with the perimeter ornamental iron fence, and then a couple of the utility items, and then some grading that we amended in the field around an embankment slide. But we do feel like it was a really successful project. A lot of community engagement. It's always hard to have the park closed during construction. They love to see us come, and then they love even more to see us go. So it's great to see folks back in there enjoying it.
Right. Any questions, comments? I'll move that we approve the extra work order, an increase in the amount of $36,175 for work done by Ronald Marini Corp. in connection with the Emerson Garden Landscape Improvement Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and now we have Babcock Street. So this is an award in the amount of $2,365, $2,365,198.60. This is all chapter 70, oh, chapter 90 reimbursed. So this is being paid for by the state, not out-of-town funds, correct?
Correct.
We get reimbursed. So this is with MDR Construction Corporation.
Yep.
Mr. Ditto.
On July 2nd, we opened bids for the reconstruction of Babcock Street. We received five bids, with the lowest being MDR Construction Company, Inc., at $2,365,198.60. As the chair said, this is chapter 90 funds. That being said, all bidders have to be pre-qualified by the state in order to submit a bid. They were all pre-qualified, and we checked the references for MDR. They were excellent. We have not worked with them before, but their references were outstanding, and we're looking forward to getting started with them. I also might add that Babcock Street was completely, the national grid replaced their mains and services on Babcock Street. So I still wrote a letter to Mr. Bacchus, asking him if there's any evidence of leaks on Babcock Street to get in touch with me.
Glad to hear.
So I think we're good.
Okay.
So we want to get going right away on this project. If you vote to award and execute it tonight, we will give the notice to proceed to the contractor tomorrow. And we have a pre-construction schedule, meeting scheduled to happen on Thursday. With respect to Mr. Pince's theory on reconstructing particularly Babcock Street, I believe he's either talking one or two methods. The first one being milling the concrete, and the second one, recycling, crushing it in place. Neither of those methods are applicable to us, at least for this project. The pavement is not solid. If you tried to mill it, it will crack and move, and it won't be a good base. And in my mind, this project, one of the main things in this project is to get rid of this concrete road. It's been a pain in our back for the last 10 or 15 years. Once the concrete pavement starts cracking and going south, there's no saving it. As far as recycling, crushing this material in place, we've done that with our sidewalk excavations, but we do it up at the landfill. If you were to do it in Babcock Street, the crusher is probably about half the size of this building. And it would be an absolute nightmare between the noise, the dust, and just not a good way to handle this. We have an excellent number for the contractor to get rid of this pavement. It's $30 a square yard. It's by far the lowest number of all the bidders. So we, we're very fortunate to have that there. As far as sitting down and talking this over, the right method, we can't afford that delay. And what probably conceivably would happen is, if we did go that route, we wouldn't be able to negotiate this contract. We'd have to throw it out and rebid it. That being said, we're probably looking at a September start if we were to go that route. And I would guarantee that you wouldn't get this number, 2.5 million. When I saw that, I was very pleased. Our estimate was closer to 2.8 million. So I strongly recommend you don't vote in favor of Mr. Pince's request.
Questions from the board? So even if we were to do that, we would have to go out to bid again?
Yeah, you can't negotiate the contract after the fact.
Yeah, this has been a-
It's been a long process.
Right. It's been before us twice on, on appeals over, what, a two-year period? Then it took however long to get to us. It was probably a year or two before we had the first appeal. And we, I think we just got today a, a letter from a resident highlighting the poor condition of Babcock Street.
I drive down it every day, because I live off of it, and it is pretty bad.
So my inclination is to vote it tonight and get this thing moving.
I mean, based on Mr. Ditto's representations regarding, you know, the process of doing this, I'm willing to vote for it tonight also.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Any sense of what MDR is going to do with the concrete when they take it off-site? Are they going to crush it up and potentially use it on another project? What's the, what's typical when you destroy-
Yeah, I think they'll take this right over to Susie's Yard in Rosendale, and they'll crush it. And then they can recycle it over there.
I'll move that we award and execute the contract for the reconstruction of Babcock Street in the amount of $2,365,198.60 with MDR Construction Corporation. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco. Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a traffic signal improvements at Walnut, at Kennard Road and Chestnut Street. And I know this is, and this is in the amount of $71,205. I know this one has been awaited with bated breath by the neighborhood. I understand there was another accident there, what, yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday.
So there's been a bunch of accidents at this intersection over the years. And it was improved maybe, what, 10-ish years ago with a pedestrian light? And as a matter of fact, today, I'm going to admit in public, I ran the light inadvertently. As, as I'm making the left turn, I looked up-
Is Chief Morgan still here?
Yeah. I looked up and the light was red, and I'm thinking, oh, gosh. So it's easy to do if you're not expecting that it's a signal.
And the sightlines are challenging.
Right. So, Mr. Ditto.
Sure. Well, you all know this is a great project. The two contractors, Pine Ridge Technologies and Dagel Electric Construction Corporation, both have worked for the town. And we have no issue with either one of them, and we're recommending Pine Ridge Technologies at $71,205 to be awarded. It's an upgrade from a pedestrian signal to a full-blown vehicle signal. It will include audible pedestrian signals, and also the countdown pedestrian signals. It will be a new detection system in the street, so.
Have we ever used a video detection system in the street?
Yes. Not in this location, but at several locations in the town. Longwood Ave. and Chapel, there is, there is a camera there. They're, they work quite well, well, and they're maintenance-free.
Though I will say, you should check the vehicle detection at Walnut and Cypress. That one, that one doesn't seem to be working.
Okay. You don't, you don't have those issues with the, with the video detection?
Right. Because this has an in-ground detection system that at, you know, Sunday morning at 7:00 a.m., you're sitting there for a full-minute cycle. So check that one out. Any other, any questions, comments from the board? So I'll move that we award and execute the contract for traffic signal improvements at Walnut, at Kennard, Kennard Road and Chestnut Street in the amount of 71,205. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have a contract with TIG and Bond in the amount of $26,900 for professional engineering services in connection with the single tree storage tank painting project. And we also have a contract with the same person, with the same firm for the single tree gatehouse improvement project. So why don't you talk about both of them, Mr. Russell?
Thank you very much. For the record, Fred Russell Waterington, who is director for the town, you correct, Mr. Chairman, we have two projects going on at the single tree tank. The first is the gatehouse renovation, which the gatehouse is at the foot of single tree tank, which supply, which we have the water supply for the town. And in that building is instrumentation, electric panels and that sort of thing. The leaves, the roof is leaking, and we're proposing to upgrade that building. The second project is the painting, or the exterior painting of the tank. It's been roughly 15 years. American Waterworks standards typically say that you should paint your tank every 10 to 15 years, so we've extended it to that length of time that we need to. And we've hired TIG and Bond to sort of facilitate both projects and put them out to bid. Funding for these projects are, is going to come from the MWRA interest-free loan, which we've already secured through town meeting recently. And it's just a matter of executing the contracts to get these projects out. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions? Okay. I'll therefore move that we award and execute a contract with TIG?
TIG.
TIG. TIG and Bond in the amount of $26,900 for professional engineering services in connection with single tree storage tank painting project, and also to execute a contract with TIG and Bond in the amount of $61,700 for professional engineering service in connection with the single tree gatehouse improvements project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And we now have a question of approving and authorizing the chair, yes, that's me, to execute a contract extension with the Brookline Housing Authority, the fiscal year 2018, residence security playgrounds and capital projects. Mr. Viola.
Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. Again, this is a simple amendment for time for the Brookline Housing Authority's fiscal 2018 CDBG contract for a number of capital improvements. As you may recall, we received our CDBG funding quite late last year. The work was not, the housing authority got their contract in November. They were not able to begin work until later than usual because of the late arrival of CDBG funds. They're finally about finished all of their work, with the exception of some parks and playground work that they're doing. And they're simply asking for an extension of time for this contract.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this? I'll move that we approve and authorize the chair to execute a contract extension with the Brookline Housing Authority for the fiscal 18 BHA residence security playgrounds and capital projects. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we're now getting to the end of the miscellaneous items. This was the longest miscellaneous items in my experience. Wow. So we have two temporary all kinds alcohol beverage, non-sales license to Lars Anderson Auto Museum at the 15 Newton Street. And it's a motion to grant for one, a corporate summer party to be held on Saturday, July 28th, from 11:30 to 4:30 p.m. And for a museum reception to be held on Thursday, August 2nd, from 4:30 to 9:30. I'll also move that we grant three temporary all kinds alcohol beverage sales licenses to the Atlantic Association of Boston at 162 God of the Avenue as follows. For wedding reception, Saturday, August 4th, 7 to 1 a.m. For a wedding reception, Thursday, August 9th, from 7 to 1 a.m. For a quinceanera to be held on Saturday, August 25th, 2018, from 6 p.m. to 1 a.m. All those, yes.
Mr. Chair, the police department has reviewed all these applications, and they appear to be in order, and there's no reason to deny any of them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Franco. Okay, all those in favor of all those motions, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton. A Green, select person Green.
I got provoked for a second.
I'll say aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'm getting punchy. Getting punch, punchy, whatever. Okay, moving on to our calendar. We have a statement regarding the- We have a statement regarding the release of, excuse me, executive session minutes. Town Council is designated by the Select Board to review minutes of the board meetings and executive session for the purpose of determining whether the minutes may be released or should remain confidential because publication would defeat the lawful purposes of the executive session. Under the open meeting law, the determination must be announced at the Select Board's next meeting and included in the meeting, in the minutes of the meeting. So, Town Council has reviewed minutes for the period, an executive session for the period July 12th, 2016 through June 26th, 2018. And the following sets of minutes may be released. October 13th, 2016. October 18th, 2016. November 9th, 2016. The minutes shall be withheld in part. Minutes pertaining to Hancock Village litigation strategy may be released. The remaining minutes to be withheld, continue to be withheld. July 25th, 2017. Minutes shall be withheld in part. Minutes pertaining to Hancock Village litigation strategy may be released. Remaining minutes shall be withheld. November 15th, 2016. The minutes may be released. I missed one. September 5th, 2017. Minutes may be withheld. In part, minutes relating to Hancock Village litigation strategy may be released. Remaining minutes should be withheld. November 28th, 2017. Litigation regarding National Grid. Minutes may be released. And I believe that's it.
I got lost, I admit, in the blizzard of dates there, but I just want to make sure. I believe the minutes of the 20th and 27th of June 2017 are also going to be released. I want to make sure that you mention those.
Oh, yeah, I missed those. Yeah, okay. Thank you for backstopping me.
My pleasure.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. We have Recreation Department personnel. We have a position to fill. Ms. Jackson, welcome again.
Yes, good evening. I am here, Lee Jackson, Recreation. Good evening. I'm here to request your approval for an authorization to hire. We have a position Curriculum Coordinator that we're looking to replace. The person in that position, Karen Makita, was promoted to Lead Assistant Admin, and therefore we need to fill that position.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
It's just nice to see that our town employees are promoted.
I thought that might be nice to hear.
Okay. I will move that we authorize the filling of the Curriculum Coordinator in the Recreation Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have another item. Select Board Personnel.
Yes.
And Mr. Faison is moving on.
Yes, you received notice from Mel Kleckner that Austin Faison has been offered an exciting opportunity to be the Town Manager in Winthrop. And we're happy for him. We're really excited for him. And we're going to need to fill his position as quickly as we can. It's been great working with Austin. He's been here for about three years and really has gotten to know the town very well. He'll be sorely missed.
I agree. You know, I've worked with Austin, we all have, and I certainly will miss him and wish him the very best in moving on. And it's nice to see moving on to a position of substantial responsibility. So that's very nice.
Winthrop is very lucky.
Yeah. Mr. Green.
Yeah. I also have a little chance to work with Austin and, you know, think that he's a great asset to both Brookline as well as now Winthrop. You know, I feel bad that he's moving on. I mean, he's such an important part of this town. But, you know, we can always look at it in terms of we prepared him for bigger things. And, you know, that's good. I hope this is just one step in a upward climb to great heights.
I agree.
Yes.
And we'll take a little bit of credit for it.
Mr. Kleckner.
Yes, if I could just say, very proud of Austin. I'm lucky because, you know, we retain relationships with our colleagues in other communities in my profession, always talking amongst each other, so I'll retain a relationship with Austin. But as Select Board Member Green said, you know, it's tough to lose good people, but on the other hand, we're very proud when one of our managers can move on to bigger and better things. And Winthrop is now a city. I don't know if people know that, but it changed its form of government a couple of years ago. It no longer has a town meeting or a Select Board. It has a council manager and as Melissa said, he'll serve as the Town Manager with a lot of executive authority. So, congratulations, Austin.
With all that, the formal part of this is to, a motion to authorize the filling of the Assistant Town Administrator vacancy in the Select Board office. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a temporary change in polling location. Mr. Ward. What's happening? So, this is affecting Precincts 2 and 8. 2 is a temporary location for just this-
Well, before I begin, I'd like to extend my personal thanks, as well as the town's gratitude and appreciation to Young Israel of Brookline.
Ah, yes.
For their efforts. It was over two years ago that we went before them to ask them to use their function hall for a two-year period, which we thought would be the complete construction cycle for Devotion School. And they were more than willing to step up and help us out. I've been in touch with the project managers of the Devotion School project, Tony Giggly, and he's been keeping us abreast all the way through. Unfortunately, I don't feel comfortable right now to recommend moving it back there. So, God bless them. You know, I went to Young Israel again and I said, not only do I want to keep 8 there for the dis-election cycle, but I'd also like to move Precinct 2 there as well. And the reason for that is simply is because of the construction projects at Coolidge Library. And although we had as a default the Babcock Street Fire Station, it really is the busiest fire station in the town and really raised some concerns, both with my office and the Chief's office. So we had an opportunity to go into Young Israel again, and so we jumped at it. So, at least for this election cycle, we'll be maintaining Precinct 8 at Young Israel.
So is this just for the primary or for both?
This is for both. And the reason why I do that is because I think it's really, it's a disservice to the voters by changing in midstream between primary and general election, the polling location. So, I think that we can do that here. And frankly, you know, if the 2016 early voting period is any reflection of what might occur in 2018, you know, it's less of a burden on the Temple than I would think it would be. So, I'm recommending to the Board today to move Precinct 2 temporarily for the September primary and the November election to Young Israel at 62 Green Street.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Well, I'd like to thank Young Israel as well, join Mr. Ward and his thanks and gratitude. I also want to highlight when elections, those elections are taking place. I think particularly the September date is a little bit funky. So, I understand that we're voting in a primary election on September 4th and then that the general election is going to take place on November 6th.
Correct. And while I have the pulpit here, I might as well say too, because of the funky holiday state primary, the last day to vote absentee will be 5:00 p.m. Friday, August 31st, not the traditional Monday at 12:00 noon, which will be Labor Day and the office will be closed.
Well, that's very, that's important information.
Well, it is posted now on the website. I have an election calendar for September there. So, we've also, because of the holiday, we have a number of extended absentee voting hours that we've put up there. So, I think we should have ourselves covered, because we've had a lot of inquiries by telephone saying, we may not be back for the state primary. What can we do? So, we do have the absentee ballots in. We're sending them out, the ones that we received by mail, and you can vote over the counter as of tomorrow.
So that the ballots are ready?
The ballots are here. They're ready.
And so anybody can vote absentee now.
Correct.
Let me just say a word about why we can't move Devotion back. I mean, as you heard from Tony Giggly earlier, you know, we expect that the contractor will be done by the end of August, but they'll still be punch list items and things of that nature. And given the fact that September 4th is actually the first day of school, it seems a little bit, it would be chaotic.
Tony's been absolutely fabulous and, you know, and he's been nothing but positive about our approach to it. But if you read his body English, every time I try to get the firm answer out of him, you know, it just, it wasn't enthusiastic. And when you took, I took a ride there last week. Now, the fences are up, apparently they're down now, but the site is a real problem, as far as I'm concerned. And we're only like five weeks away from the primary. It was time to eat a fish or cut bait and we cut bait. You know, we're going to stay at, I'm recommending that you keep Precinct 8 at Young Israel for this election cycle, as well as change Precinct 2 to Young Israel as well.
And we thank them for not only their willingness to house us in the past couple of years, but their willingness to be flexible and continue.
I think they'll be happy to see us go, but they've been more than generous with us. And they really stood up for us, you know. We came in there, they were expecting us not to be there any longer, and we asked them if we could be there for two more elections and an additional precinct. And they said yes. And that's just a fabulous thing.
Wow.
Okay. I think it's the right decision. We saw Mr. Giggly's body language when Select Person Heller asked the question, is it on budget? Well, that, he was firm on that one, but is it on time? And he was dancing a little bit.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. We, he actually worked well with the designer and he planned us a real room that we could actually use for the voting location. So we're really aware of what's available to us. It's just, it's not ready right now.
Right. That's, that's fine. Okay. So I will move that we approve the temporary location change for Precinct 2 to Young Israel at 62 Green Street, the side entrance. Do I need to, that's just, that's the vote that's on the calendar.
You should have the side entrance in there.
Right, okay. Do we, we don't need to do anything with 8? Okay. Okay.
For Precinct 8, we don't need anything.
No, nothing. It'll remain the same.
Okay. So the motion is for, to move Precinct 2 to Young Israel, 62 Green Street, side entrance. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Okay. Are you hailing the warrant, right now, the primary warrant?
Uh, we could do that.
No? That's okay. I'm, that's fine.
Since you, we, that's a pretty straightforward item.
Right.
Save us time later. So, is there any discussion that's necessary?
No, actually, you could have done it later on in the evening. You don't even need me for it, so.
Okay. So I'll move that we execute the warrant for the September 4th, 2018 state primary election. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Okay. So now we're ready for the water rate hearing. We're running about 30 minutes behind at this point. We have another public hearing noticed for 8 o'clock.
Don't worry, this will be straightforward as usual.
Yeah, that one's going to be very late. And then we have the Transportation Board appeal, and that one's going to be very late. So, Mr. Russell, welcome.
Thank you. Before I get into my water and sewer rate presentation, just briefly, I want to just give the Board an update on what we've been doing this last year. As you know, we typically come here the end of June to have rates proposal to be enacted July 1st. Due to a snafu in scheduling and notification under warrant Article 9, we didn't notify town meeting members of the Board in time, which pushed us to tonight, which means we'll be asking for a rate increase effective August 1st rather than July 1st. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, is that back in October, the Commissioner and I spoke, and we always have these sort of interactive meetings with the Board about fairness and equity and that sort of thing in the rates that we have. So we thought it prudent to hire an outside consultant to sort of give an independent view of our rates and our rate structure, to give us an opinion on, are we way off? Are we close? Do we need to tweak things a little bit and that sort of thing? And in March, our consultant issued a, sort of a report, giving us some, some things to think about. But it was right around the town meeting time. And as some of you know, I have what I call a group of individuals that are sort of helping me with like a working group on the rate structure to come to some sort of resolution on something that's fair and equitable for everybody. We have not been able to meet, to discuss this with the consultant. In June, some of my members put together some points, sort of discussion points on some of the conclusions that the consultant made. We just haven't had a chance to get together. So there is, this is a work in progress. We do expect a resolution that we would be making to the Board in the coming months so that we don't run into this problem next year. So, I just want to give you that background as well.
Could I just add also that in relation to the hearing and the presentation, I think what we've decided to do, we've waited to wait until the MWRA rates come out late, but I think we're going to hold our hearing during the regular budget process in, you know, March-April timeframe in the future. So, it's all in context with the budget. We'll, it won't be the final rates, but I think the warrant article doesn't contemplate that.
Yeah, correct. Thank you. So that being said, I actually, I noticed I have four of my members here, which I think is great. I'd like to just thank them very much, Dick Banka, Linda Pelkey, Ernie Frye, and Dave Ossoli. They're great people, smart people, and care a lot about the town, which is great. So with that, my presentation, this is, again, I'll try to be brief. As you know, we have, our current structure is based on, it's a three-tiered system. We have a base charge, which we charge people a fixed cost for the meters that they have, the size, based on the size meter. And it's really, that base charge is meant to recoup just the administrative costs within the, within our rates. Anywhere from 15% to 18% we're shooting for. The second is the block rates, which is totally dependent on usage. And the higher usage that you use, the more you pay. It promotes conservancy. And the last is the fire service, which some of the buildings in town actually have a hard connection to the water system, so they are charged, a surcharge for that as well. Just to give you an idea of where our water, where our money goes, as you can see, the MWRA assessment is a huge impact as far as what their rates are and what ours are moving forward. Roughly 50% of the, 55% of the water assessment is based in MWRA, and sewers even more of an impact. It's a little over 80% based on what the MWRA charges us. This year, we've seen increases in personnel. The MWRA assessment, under the preliminary assessment, was going up over $300,000. We have an increase in capital equipment and intergovernmental reimbursement, which is roughly around $1 million, just slightly under $1 million of increase. The other thing that's somewhat staggering is the water consumption in Brookline, which some say it's a good thing that it's going down and we're conserving more, but the thing is if we don't sell water, we don't make money. So, we've endured probably a 12, a little over 12% decrease in usage over the last two years. So we need to factor that in as well, that we're selling less water now than we were before, in addition to the increases in the budget. Just to recap what we're doing, we're updating a lot of things that need updating. We're updating our water distribution CIP, our flushing program, and our distribution model. That's all ongoing. One of the things, I'm actually looking at that bottom one, is Aqua Hawk. What we're going to roll out to the public this year is this idea we had back, it was roughly three years ago, and it's a portal for customers to monitor their accounts through the web. And what they can do is they can sign up for it. The reason we've held off doing this is tooth hold. Number one, we had to work out some kinks in the software with this. And the second thing was, is that we wanted to make sure that we had somewhat of a historical background with people's accounts before they log on and see what they're, you know, whether they're exceeding their historical usage or not. So that's why we've sort of delayed that. But basically, you can see, this is a typical chart that a resident could see, is, you can see there's, at the very end, there's like a little spike, and potentially there was, there's a leak that they can look at. There's also, they can look at, if they have an irrigation meter, they can tie it to the actual rainfall to see if the irrigation system is working, say for instance, when it's raining out, and maybe they want to adjust that. You can also set thresholds. In other words, if you want to know what you're spending or what your consumption is during the month, you can have a trigger, and you can either have a text message sent to you, you can have an email sent to you, you can have a phone call, or whatever, as far as you want to be let, you want to be notified when your threshold or when your usage is at a certain rate that you want, so you can adjust things accordingly. So again, that's going to be rolled out this year to the public. We'll do it through the internet, we'll do it through our buildings, and that sort of thing. Sewer, we're actually in year two of our 16-year CIP, we're getting ready to put out to bid the second year for construction, starting in the fall. That's the town divided up into 16 zones where we're going to basically line all of the old sewer pipes in the town to eliminate inflow and infiltration, which is adding cost to our sewer assessments for the MWR. Stormwater, this actually, we got a little bit of a reprieve. They held off, they actually had to stay with the permit, the EPA, which, so we kind of put things on hold because then we weren't sure if they were going to revise the permit or if they were going to rescind it, or what were they going to do. Well, it turned out they issued it again, so the same permit, but we just got delayed off a year. So we haven't really done anything on this, so, but we will, this, we will be, again, hitting that as well. Basically, the main focus is phosphorus reduction in the muddy river and in the Charles River, which is not something that's cheap. The first five years is basically planning, and the next 15 years is implementation and construction. And you can see there's some outliers as far as what we expect to encounter with costs as we go into the, into the final years. So what I'm proposing this year for a rate increase is 3%. Typical 128 CF years, per year, single-family residents is looking at about a $35 per year increase. And that's it. So, if there's any questions?
So I'm very curious, what do you attribute this decrease in water consumption to?
That's a great question. I wish I had a great answer.
[laughing]
We actually talked about this with our group, and we got different theories. With some of the new home construction, they have the, you know, the water-saving fixtures and that sort of thing nowadays, and even some of the irrigation systems. More people are putting irrigation systems in, which believe it or not adds to a decrease because it's a more efficient system than someone watering a hose and that sort of thing, so.
And there's no sewer charge?
Right, there's no sewer charge as well. Right, right. But again, it's, the usage is going down. So I can speculate. I do know that the other MWR communities are experiencing somewhat of a decrease, but nowhere near where we are, so.
So it's 12% from?
In the last two years.
In the last two years?
Yeah, roughly about 6%.
6% a year?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So I'm wondering if you can just expand a little bit on this, this report that you got back in March, on two accounts. One, sort of what the preliminary conclusions were. I know you haven't had a chance to meet with them yet, but at a high level, what did the report say?
Well, from my standpoint, it, what I took from it was that we don't have to blow the system up and start from scratch, in that the system we have is somewhat in place, and we think we need to just tweak some of the things, some of the different concepts, some of maybe the different tiered rates and that sort of thing. So again, make some recommendations. We had some counterpoints to it with the consultant. We haven't had a chance to sit down with the consultant. It was more of a draft for speaking items when we do meet.
So what's led to this delay in sitting down with the consultant?
Well, when we got the report, we received it in March, and when I sent it to the group and asked if we could get together, it was right around town meeting, and people were really tied up with town meeting through the end of May. And that was one of the things, the response I got was, let's, can we wait till town meeting is over, then we'll sit down again, or we'll reboot. And then we received a letter with the counterpoints from some of the group members in late June. And then, which is why we are where we are today.
I mean, I'll observe, it's the end of July, and town meeting took place in May, so that gives a month and a half after town meeting, and now we're being asked to vote an increase in the water rate. It seems unfortunate that we've got a report that's in varying stages of completion, and we're yet again here having a conversation about making increases to a system that may need to be tweaked at the very least.
Mm-hmm.
I, so apparently, the comparison with Brookline and Melrose and North Hampton was the basis of this report, as I understand it.
That was one of the points, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but North Hampton is nothing like Brookline. I mean, it's.
Correct. And again, that's why, I didn't want to come prepared to talk about this because it's in a draft form. It's still in a working form. We still need to meet, we still need to talk. Again, it's very early stages as far as going back and forth and making counterpoints with what was sent to us.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? Now is your time. Mr. Luscolier?
Hello, my name is David Luscolier, town meeting member, Precinct 11. And as Fred has mentioned, we have a staff-appointed committee that's been meeting regularly over a period of time, having set in place the process in, 2015. Going back to 2011, at that time, the Enterprise Fund was in the red, and our current structure was built to stabilize it, and it has done so. It was a step in the right direction. But after having stabilized it, and now with a number of years of experience, we feel, and clearly we learned from the report that we received, that there's an opportunity to do some tweaking and improving of the structure. Last year, when I was up here, I recommended that we have a study, and that's what Fred has done. He's commissioned a study, he brought in a consultant, and it's just that with everything that's going on, we need a little bit more time to come back to you with a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Pinches? And Mr. Frye, after that.
Hi, this is more questions than comments. First of all, they were talking about the phosphorus. Does anyone know what the source of the phosphorus is? Is this more like from fertilizer around town? Or is there any way that we could try to, you know, persuade people to use less fertilizer if that's the source, or something more or less on the prevention side and not just try to keep up with the results? So that would be one question. And two, since most of our economic development seems to be hotels and restaurants, which were about the only businesses that can survive the property taxes in town, and these are all labor, not labor-intensive, but water-intensive businesses, has anybody looked at the impact on that, how much it affects it? I don't know how much of the, you know, 595 Starbucks coffee or whatever they're getting these days would actually be attributable to the water rates. But again, obviously Starbucks uses a lot of water because that's a high percentage of Starbucks, somewhat facetious of course. But again, the point is now their water is a very important part of a lot of businesses over there, and to see how this might affect our economic development, incentives for savings, or possibly encouraging businesses, again, that might be interested in Brookline but might be discouraged by the high use and high cost of water. So two questions, again, you know.
Okay.
Where is the phosphorus coming from, and what's the effect on business?
So I have a question for Mr. Russell. 100 cubic feet is about, how many gallons?
748.
So.
748.
So at $5, so at 13, 1405, 14, $14.05 per 100 cubic foot after the, in Block 2?
Is this a math test?
Divide, no, no, no. Divided, what was it, 780? No, I got a calculator here. So that, that $5 latte you get at Starbucks, a gallon of the water now, the $5 latte is not a gallon, it's maybe, what, 12 ounces? So a gallon is a little under 2 cents. So I don't think the cost of the water has too much to do with the price of the Starbucks latte.
No, I don't disagree. So to answer the gentleman's question, phosphorus, primarily the phosphorus is coming from fertilizers. There is some contribution from, actually exhausts from vehicles as well, but primarily it's from fertilizers. What we do do as a town during site plan review for buildings, even single-family houses, we encourage people to take runoff and put it into the ground rather than let it runoff. So that's one way of handling it as well, is handling it at the source rather than at the end, which is where the muddy river is. And then, yeah, we require calculations on sewer demand and water demand, anytime any sort of development comes in to make sure that what impact it's going to have on our infrastructure.
How much are, used to be that a lot of household products, washing machine soap and, I don't know about dishwashing soap, but contain phosphorus? Now, I know for a long time I've bought ones that are free of phosphorus, but is that still the case?
I've never known of that. I've heard they contain surfactants, which is a little different. Plus, they're going into the wastewater. This is stormwater.
Okay.
Okay, I guess, I'll just, oh, Mr. Frye. Sorry.
Hi, Ernie Frye, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. I just wanted to send a thanks out to Fred for his willingness to work with us. He's a very easy person to work with, and he seems very much interested in trying to get rates that are fair to the town and all the bodies, and to each of the classes of customers that we have, people living in condominiums, people living in single-family houses. And with the, you know, we got the report back from the, from the vendor there, Raftellis, and we did not want to rush to a recommendation to this select board as a result of that. We thought that there was some good meat in that report, and we wanted some time to be able to deliberate with it. And Fred has been very, very helpful and very generous in trying, in working with us. And I feel that next, next billing cycle, or the next time we come before you for next year's rates, we will have a much better recommendation that we can make to you, and that it will be fair to all of the customers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Benka.
Just very quickly.
And who are you?
Oh, I am Dick Benka. I actually was the point person for this board when we established the current, the basis of the current rate structure back for fiscal year 12. And I've had the pleasure of being on this working group more recently. In Mr. Russell's defense, we actually had a meeting scheduled within the last couple of weeks, and the consultant canceled it at the last minute, said that he had an emergency, couldn't make it, and then we were trying to reschedule around his schedule, and we were not able to do it. So we did have a meeting in place with the consultant, and it was a consultant's choice, because of his schedule, the meeting didn't happen.
And I apologize if I seem heavy-handed. My frustration comes from the fact that I've been on this board for now four and a half years, and every year we have this conversation, and there are these persistent complaints about rate inequity, consumption inequity. I've highlighted what I think is an oddity about the fact that we're charging people for connections for sprinkler systems, which I view as a public good. It contains a fire to the point of origin, it keeps it smaller. So I hope that Mr. Frye's comments are correct, that a year from now, or approximately a year from now, we'll come back with something that's a little bit more responsive to some of the concerns that we've heard.
Thank you.
Okay.
And you did hear Mr. Frye say that I'm easy to work with, so when the Commissioner comes back on vacation, you can, you can let him know.
Okay. So you're going to be on the hot seat next year if you don't have recommendations.
Okay.
Okay. So I will move.
One other comment before we move. I just, I caught reference somewhere, I think it was in the Topper memo, that Mr. Peppa Sturgeon signed, to a elderly exemption program that provides for a 20% discount for seniors. Can you just do two sentences on that, what it is and how people can apply for it?
Well, they actually get qualification through the assessors department, and then as far as their income, I forget what the actual up level is as far as what they need to, what they can't exceed, and then once they get, I guess, qualified through the assessors office, they then send word down to us, and we abate their water and sewer bill.
So the person to talk to, or the department to talk to, is the assessors office?
Correct.
If they've got questions about it.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I will move, it's a complicated vote that I will just make a reference to the page in the packet, but the rates are basically 3%. They're displayed on the screen, but the exact legal language is in the packet before us. So I will move that we set the fiscal year 19 rates to be effective August 1st, 2018, in accordance with the memo dated May 24th, 2018, the second and third pages that are in our packets, and the rates are on the screen, 3%. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
I just want to raise one procedural issue, and that is, so the vote included number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that we did adopt the elderly exemption?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Okay, and now we have Gateway East. This has been a long, drawn-out and complicated project. This is one little piece of it.
Long, drawn-out and complicated, and now everything needs to happen within a limited amount of time.
Right.
Brookline Way.
Well, Mast dot way, too, so. Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning, just wanted to note with me tonight, John Bukite from Town Council's office, as well as Katie Klein from KP Law, our outside counsel relating to all of the right-of-way work and all the town meeting work that you've seen from May to this time. Katie's capably advised the town leading up to town meeting, and all the agreements that you'll be signing tonight, we wouldn't have been there without Katie. So I'd like to just acknowledge her for all of her hard work. Tonight, we're asking the select board to vote on a number of items related to Gateway East, including an order of taking and a number of legal agreements between the town and affected property owners. Town meeting's unanimous approval of warrant Article 9 this past May authorizes the town, through the select board, to acquire all property rights, including permanent and temporary easements and rights of entry. That'll be needed for the construction of the Gateway East project. An affirmative vote by the select board to execute the order of taking and all of these agreements will, with affected property owners, will ensure that these needed, we have these needed property rights. will, uh, with affected property owners, will ensure that these needed, we have these needed property, property rights. With the Gateway East project construction bid timeline rapidly approaching, uh, I just wanted to note that tonight's, the timing of tonight's votes is critical. Just to follow the agenda and to talk about the specific items, Item Twelve A is the order of taking. And an order of taking is required to acquire, is required to acquire the temporary and permanent easements necessary to construct roadways, sidewalks, bike lanes, and other project improvements. And regardless of whether an affected property owner donates the easements or chooses compensation, the order of taking must be executed by the Select Board in order to secure the property rights for public use. Following the vote of the order of taking this evening, town staff, advised by our outside counsel, will move forward with a number of required steps in order to ensure that we attain, obtain a right-of-way certificate from Mast dot community compliance. Uh, this is needed for us to take the next step for Mast dot to actually bid this project for construction. Uh, related to Item Twelve B, all of the legal agreements, uh, just a, an overview of all these is that we're asking you to vote on them. They're all, a, a number of agreements with affected property owners, owners. And, uh, these agreements have been negotiated over a number of months with each individual property owner. Uh, each of these agreements has effectively secured the donation of property rights that we need for the project. And as well, the, uh, the, uh, the agreement set forth the conditions under which the, the affected parties have agreed to donate the easements. Um, there are seven agreements with four property owners that the Board is being asked to vote on. As you can see in the agenda, four of those are with the Brookline Housing Authority. One is with CLPF Ten Brookline Place, the owner of, of Brookline Place. One is with Kenwood Investments, the developer who is redeveloping the, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts property at the corner of Boylston and High Street. And finally, this Claremont, Claremont Brookline Avenue LLC. They are the developer of the hotel at seven hundred Brookline Avenue. Um, related to Item Twelve C, dedication of easements. This vote concerns, uh, town property next to the Brookline Fire Station, Firehouse One in Brookline Village. A vote of the Select Board authorizes a Mast dot contractor via temporary easements to enter on portions of this property to construct the roadway and associated improvements. This vote also dedicates a small parcel of the fire station property for use as a permanent layout for the Gateway East road improvements. Item Twelve D, release of easement at Ten Brookline Place. Uh, you will recall this from past town meeting, uh, Warren Article Ten. The owner of that building, CLPF Ten Brookline Place, has donated permanent and temporary easements to the town for the Gateway East project. And, uh, you are authorized by town meeting to release the interest of, to an easement containing approximately nine hundred and twenty-six square feet for the now demolished pedestrian bridge at that location. All the other underlying easement rights will be retained, and as, as you probably recall, uh, this is called a, a housekeeping matter by our Director of Engineering and Transportation. And finally, Item Twelve E, contract amendment, amendment and extension with VHB. You may recall Warren Article Twelve, related to a construction match to Mast dot for the Gateway East project. Uh, attached to that vote was strong encouragement for the inclusion of a continuous planting strip. Uh, we're asking for an amendment and extension to VHB's contract to allow for that work, both the engineering and landscape architect work. And a substantial part of that amendment goes directly to the incorporation of those planting strips. While, uh, the remainder of that contract will be used to address some coordination issues related with all these development sites. This is a project that's had to coordinate with a number of development sites. It's, it's been a, a challenge to coordinate those issues. And as well, uh, there are a number of comments related from, coming our way from Mast dot that our designers are being asked to, to, uh, to address prior to the submission of hundred percent plans, specs, and estimates that VHB will submit on behalf of the town in early August. So I know that was a really big-picture overview of all the agenda items that we're asking you to vote on. That's why we're all here tonight. If there are any specific questions related to any of these documents or agreements, uh, we want to do our best to answer your questions.
Okay, this, uh, this corner of town, um, is undergoing a vast transformation between, uh, the private projects that are going on at Two Brookline Place and One Brookline Place that the steel is, is, is in place now. It's kind of fun to watch, uh, uh, that happening. And then, the Claremont Hotel, which, uh, select person Franco referred to at the very beginning of the session, um, the groundbreaking was last week, and they are out there with, uh, with dump trucks moving dirt as, as, as we speak. And then, this project, uh, transforming the public way. So this, turning this corner of, of Brookline that meets Boston into a true gateway into town, and a true urban gateway. And it's pretty exciting. I think, uh, the first meeting I went to on this was in about, what, two thousand and three? Uh, that, that the first committee was put together, uh, with, headed by, uh, select person Bobby Allen at the time. So, uh, yeah, this is, was Donna Calico on that one, too?
Joe Geller.
Joe Geller. When he was a selectman.
Yes.
Yeah. So this, this really goes, goes back, uh, a, a long way. And, uh, and I, I understand this is, this piece of the project has been quite a haul for you. And I, I, I hear you've been doing yeoman's work, uh, bring, pulling this whole thing together, and it hasn't been easy.
Uh, there are definitely many aspects to this project, from right-of-way to design to community process. So there, there are a lot of moving parts, for sure.
So, uh, yeah, thank you for that. So, uh, members of the Board.
I'll, I'll join the Chair in saying thank you to you, Mr. Viola. Um, I know I had the, the pleasure of speaking about this project in the floor of town meeting, and you and I spent some quality time together, uh, educating me to get up to speed. So I was prepared to stand up there and, um, speak about the intricacies of the project. Um, so thank you for the, all the work you've done. Uh, I will come back to the Chair's comments and also reiterate the fact that this has been a long time coming. Uh, when I, uh, worked on the, uh, the River Road with the Emerald Island Special District, one of the things we heard was, um, we've been having this conversation about making a more welcoming gateway for thirty-plus years and trying to reimagine this stretch of roadway. So, I think, um, in combination with the private projects that the Chair mentioned, uh, this is a major component in beautifying and improving this stretch of town. And hopefully, there'll be future projects, uh, at an appropriate time when we can handle them and have not too much disruption.
I'll just add, add that, I've been in this business a long time, and this is probably the most complicated public works project ever that I've been involved in. And there's a, there's a reason, and it's because of, we're not doing it ourselves. We're actually working with, through a state and federal process of securing funding and then working with Mast dot, who was actually bidding and constructing the project. But we need to make it ready for them. And for us, that meant a lot of, uh, funding issues, a lot of design issues, and a lot of, uh, property right issues. Uh, and I want to thank Joe very much. There's been others who are involved in this, but Joe's been the quarterback, and I really appreciate his effort. He has been tenacious about it. Um, I'm not looking forward to going any, to any more of those meetings in Boston with you, Joe. But I got a feeling we'll probably be one or two more before this practice is over. But I just want to say thank you very much, and, uh, you know, the town meeting support, uh, leading up to this has been great. And I think it's, uh, the result of what you said, Mr. Chair, that this project really will transform the community in this area. And really, I believe, had a lot to do with some of the private investment that, uh, is going on in that, in that area. So, uh, it's really been, um, rewarding, and it'll be a lot more rewarding when it's done.
So the shovels in the ground, what are we looking at?
Project bid is expected to be, uh, this August, and substantial construction we're looking at next spring.
Wow. So that'll be getting toward the end of the Brookline Pla- there'll be some overlap between this and Brookline Place.
There will be some overlap in a lot of these legal documents that are actually before you contemplate the overlap, who's doing what. So a lot of the nuancing that had to happen to make these agreements work was exactly that, who would be doing what, when. So, that, that speaks to some of the coordination that was required for the project.
I'll, I'll note that in my, in my time on the Board, this is the second time, uh, third time that we're doing eminent domain. The, the first one was, uh, Comeoff Avenue, I believe. That was a very minor thing, the temporary easements. Um, and then, of course, the high school, one-eleven Cypress. Now, now this one, uh, you know, th- this is perhaps, you know, for, for road construction and road expansion, that's kind of a, I'll call it an uncontroversial eminent domain. Um, you don't get into the philosophical issues about eminent domain that we've seen in some of our other forays into, uh, into that world. So, uh, just make note of that. Um, okay, anything else? Are we ready for some of these very technical votes? So let's, let's do it. Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we approve and execute an order of taking for temporary and permanent easements shown on the plans entitled "Easement Plan in Brookline, Massachusetts", dated July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Venice Hangan, Brussels Inc., VHB, to secure the right-of-way for construction of the Gateway East project. Uh, and these are permanent easements in, over, in, on, over, and along the parcels...
Under.
And under, and along the parcels of land, shown on the plan as E-one, E-two, E-four, E-six, and E-nine and E-ten collectively, the permanent roadway easement premises. Lawyer had to have written this, gosh. Temporary construction easements in, on, over, under, and along the parcels of land shown on the plan as TE-one, TE-two, TE-three, TE-four, TE-five, TE-seven, eight, TE-eleven, TE-twelve, thirteen, fourteen collectively, the temporary construction easements. So that's, that's a motion. All those in favor, please say aye. And this is the taking, the motion to approve and execute an order of taken. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The next item is a, a motion to approve and execute legal agreements between the town of Brookline and the following affected property owners relating to the construction of the Gateway East project. The Brookline Housing Authority, an easement agreement for the roadway, an easement agreement for parking, a memorandum of agreement, and a right-of-entry agreement. CLPF Ten Brookline Place LLC, a memorandum of agreement. Kenwood Investments LLC, a legal agreement. And Claremont Brookline Avenue LLC, a legal agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Uh, I'll move that we dedicate the following properties for the purposes specified thereunder in connection with the Gateway East project, shown on the plans entitled "Easement Plan in Brookline, Massachusetts", dated, uh, July sixteenth, prepared by VHB as follows. A permanent easement, E-four, a hundred fifty-two square feet, plus or minus, for sidewalk purposes. A temporary easement, TE-four, one thousand sixty square feet, plus or minus, for sidewalk reconstruction purposes. And a temporary easement, TE-three, twenty-seven sixty-one square feet, plus or minus, for sidewalk reconstruction purposes. All those in favor?
I believe that third one was TE-five, plus or minus twenty-seven sixty-one.
Thank you for backstopping me. What a team. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. I'll move that we approve and execute an agreement to abandon an easement containing nine hundred twenty-six square feet, more or less, and release all rights to an interest in said agreement, said easement to CLPF Ten Brookline Place LLC pursuant to the vote taken under Article Ten of the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Green, aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And I'll, I'll move that we authorize the use of fifty-six thousand thirty-five dollars in town funds for design and engineering costs needed for the completion of one hundred percent plan specs and estimates for the Gateway East project. Ninety-nine hundred for DPW CIP, eleven-two-eight, two-hundred-and-eighty for CDBG revolving, from CDBG revolving, uh, four thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents for the gateway, from the Gateway East gift account, and thirty thousand five-eighty-nine oh five, uh, from the Gateway East FY-seventeen CDBG account. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Uh, excuse me, isn't there a number two to that?
That'll be the next motion.
Okay, aye then.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton, and the Chair votes aye. And lastly, uh, I'll move that we approve and execute contract amendment and extension between the town of Brookline and VHB Engineering and, uh, VHB Engineering Services in support of the Gateway East project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller's.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So the first one was the money, and the second one is the contract. Okay, we got through it.
We did. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Great work. Okay, so it's now eight-ten. Uh, we've noticed two, uh, alcohol, uh, public hearings for eight and eight-fifteen. We have one item before that, so I'm estimating, gosh, the eight, the eight o'clock will go in, at eight-thirty-ish. And then we have a Transportation Board appeal, uh, public hearing that's noticed for eight-thirty, and I'm going to estimate nine o'clock for that. Okay, so the next, uh, next item up is Police Department Policies and Procedures. Chief Morgan. Why don't you hold on a minute until we get...
Fine with me.
Yeah. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? Putting my shoes back on. We'll be back in a couple of minutes. The pause that refreshed. Okay. Chief Morgan, sorry about that. We've been going for a few hours. Guess we just needed a little break.
Good, glad I got you guys all fresh now.
Right.
So, we're here on the review of the draft policies that we had set onto as far as the citizen complaint policy that we want to update. It was first in 1987, and updated substantially in 2009. And as far as one of the things we do, a citizen review. And Lieutenant Paul Campbell, Police Department of the Office of Professional Responsibility, worked extensively with Bobby Nabel and Kelly Race, formulated some changes, recommended changes. They were sent over to the Board, Select Board, and also they were examined and vetted by the Town Council. So, as far as what was presented to you is what we, as the Police Department, support the recommendations of Bobby Nabel and Kelly Race to go forward with the policy as written. Myself, extensively Lieutenant Campbell, prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Ms. Race or Ms. Nabel, would you like to say anything? I guess I'm putting you on the spot. Sorry about that.
Kelly Race. I guess that we are here and are curious about any questions that you might have, but hope that you all have had the opportunity to read through it. We have recommended, I think, some fairly significant changes in, from the title of the policy to some of the terms of it. And we are certainly willing to answer any questions that you have. We did go through, it was a pretty extensive process of going through all of the citizen complaints, going through the policy itself, worked very closely with Lieutenant Campbell and with Chief O'Leary, and are happy with, I guess, what we have come up with, and hope that you will support this as well.
Ms. Nabel. You don't have to, but since you're here.
It was an educational process for us as well. I think that, for me, certainly it was reassuring to see the very serious way that complaints from citizens were taken and dealt with. I think that the process was a collaborative one, that some of the changes that we've suggested seem minor because they are about, sometimes, words or minor processes. But I think the intent was to make a process that was accessible to town residents, that they felt that they would get a fair and complete hearing from complaints, and that it would be a process that would be understood by those who have an interest in issues of that sort.
What are some of the more significant suggested changes that you can highlight for the public? And I don't know who the right person is of the group.
Lieutenant Campbell.
Okay, Lieutenant Campbell. What are some of the substantive, you know, there's some name changes and gender neutral, you know, stuff like that is important, but it's, you know, it's not going to change the substance. What are some of the things that the public should know?
So, you're right, the investigative process really isn't changed by the updates that we're recommending here in this policy. Some of the changes that I've noted that might make a difference. The new policy, under the current policy prior to these recommended changes, a person can submit a complaint either to the police station or to the board. In practice, we've also taken complaints from the Chief Diversity Officer for the town. It's just always been an informal practice. That's become formalized in the new policy. In the current state of the policy, we classify complaints, Class A, Class B, Class C, or Class D. Class A being serious, Class B being less serious, Class C being complaints against a policy, not against a person, and Class D complaints being complaints that are clearly frivolous or don't allege misconduct. We're recommending that we do away with the classifications. What we're finding is that for Class A complaints, we're not having any problems. For Class B complaints, it's sometimes giving the appearance to people that their complaints are of a less serious nature, and just that we don't care about them quite as much, or these are only Class B complaints. We're recommending getting rid of the classifications, but the procedure in investigating them is not going to change. We're removing-
Can I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
And I see the purpose of that, but by getting rid of those classifications, the board doesn't get notice of the serious Class A complaints. And I think it's important that we be aware of those types of complaints. And there's no, I don't see any process whereby we would get notice of such complaints under these changes.
Yeah, so-
Am I missing something, or?
And I'm trying to remember if we actually included that. The recommendation is that complaints that we would deem serious, we would follow the classifications, we would follow the procedure as far as notifications as if it were a Class A complaint. It just would not be designated a Class A complaint. I believe in practice, the board gets notified-
That is my practice. I always advise the board, every complaint that comes in.
Yeah, and I believe that is the case. I can't think of, I've been in the Office of Professional Responsibility for seven years, I can't think of one instance where a complaint of a serious nature, where notification wasn't made. I cannot remember the specific language in the policies, so I can't swear that it's in there, but as a practical matter, it would always, what you're questioning would always take place. Is something else, the new policy removes any reference to lie detectors. It's just not something that we do, and it doesn't make sense to have something in there that realistically, we're not ever going to use. I don't think the science is definitive either way as to whether or not they're effective. And I personally have my questions about them, and so it made sense to remove them. You know, the final thing is, we took out the section on discipline, disciplinary hearings. It's not going to be removed from the policy altogether. It just made sense maybe to not put the discipline section in the complaint section because there are a number of other areas where a person, an employee, may be subject to discipline. So, our thinking is, we're going to have a separate discipline policy that's standalone to apply in a more broad sense than just the civilian complaints.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
First of all, I appreciate the fact that this report is thorough and equally important, readable, because it's a very important report, and it's important that people be able to have access to the information that you put in there, and I thank Bobby and Kelly for that. One thing, page three, well, let's see. I guess the question is, do we have any information on the residence of complainants? And that's one thing that I didn't see anywhere in the report or in the policy for that matter.
Whether they're Brookline residents or-
Yeah, because I mean, that's very important because, you know, for example, with respect to traffic stops of black motors, you know, the population of Brookline is 3.9%, so thereabouts. But, you know, our numbers are much higher because people travel through Brookline from Boston. So, it seems to me that it'd be useful to have information on the residence of the complainants, just so we can assess, you know, what's really going on here.
I don't have that information as part of this process. I do have all the-
Is it information, I mean, I assume it's in the police reports.
That information is all available, yeah, in the computer, but it wasn't part of this report, and off the top of my head, I would just be guessing.
So, I guess in the future, it would be useful to have that information in the report that the department does. Secondly, one of the things that sort of jumped out at me is interactions with civilians have been going down precipitously over the last few years, except for parking tickets. Maybe it's those that I get. Why is that? I mean, that's sort of counterintuitive. Is there something that I'm missing that?
I'm going to make an educated guess, so we civilianize the parking tickets. It used to be police officers, I can't remember when we did that, but we have full-time people out there writing parking tickets more than in prior years. Superintendent might know better about exactly when we did that. So, that might relate to the parking tickets. I'm sorry, what was the second half of your?
Well, the first part was, why are the police civilian interactions going down so significantly?
So, yeah.
I mean, that's good news unless we're missing something.
Well, one of the things is, just off the bat, that we're down so many police officers. So, right there, when you take the number of police officers down, they're not making as many contacts. So, where we roll out extra manpower, we operate at a minimum staffing level each time. Additionally, as far as the motor vehicle citations, are down by one of the parts of the procedural justice, is make sure that as far as the quality of the stops are just over quantity. We want to make sure that these are public safety instances where they make the stops, that they're true hazards, as far as instead of someone may have any, you know, effective taillight or headlight that they can figure out themselves, their headlights out, they'll get it fixed, instead of stopping the motors on that. We're trying to get more quality stops as far as, so if someone's really speeding, going through the intersection, failing to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk, so number of that is downward. Not just chasing numbers, we're actually looking for quality in the stop, so there's, those are two things right to jump off the bat as far as with that.
But field interrogations are also going down significantly, yeah?
With the field, we also, remember, we changed, to be classified to two things, so field contacts and field interrogation. The field interrogations used to be for anybody that had contact with the police. If we went to someone's house and someone had set the alarm off accidentally, you want to identify that, as it was the landscaper or something like that, that was put in the field interrogation thing, where now we made a definitive break between that someone has to be of unlawful design to be a field interrogation, and everything else goes as a field contact. So, that, we still type it, it's way differently as far as what they are, and we only count as far as the field interrogation is being related to crime. Right after, to answer your question, there's a stop, some of the main reasons.
Maybe a question to Bobby and Kelly, if they have, you know, thought about this, or maybe you give us some thought of this. And one of the complaints we hear about, I mean, I hear about occasionally, is people are afraid to make complaints. Is there anything that afraid, or for some other reason, don't make complaints even though they have a complaint with the police? I mean, are there any ideas on how, you know, of any impediments that we can sort of get out of, or eliminate in order to make sure that people who have complaints, you know, actually come forward so that we know what's going on and can, you know, correct any imperfections or?
So, we have the civilian complaint policy, which is the formal policy, and people can go to the Board of Selectmen, to the Police Department, to the Office of Diversity to file their complaints. But additionally, we take any complaint, anonymous complaints, people can do it on our website. So, it's not in the formal policy, but every complaint we get, we investigate in some manner, as far as, it doesn't have to, if someone comes in and announces a complaint about, you know, a particular officer did X, Y, and Z, we still investigate, even though it's not through this policy. And if you look as far as, I think last year, we only had two formal complaints, and a year before, four formal complaints that were brought in. We have other numerous complaints that are brought by unsatisfied, unhappy citizens that maybe that we media out, that we try to satisfy them, we send a different officer, we do this. So, we get other complaints, but not anything substantial usually comes through with the complaint. So, as far as, you know, if it comes through, we're getting complaints to the website, and it seems something very significant, we'd have the, we follow up with the, you know, Office of Professional Responsibility, we'd reach out to them, we'd send them a form anyway, as far as if they were able to email them, so even though they don't want to file a formal complaint, we're still going to send them a complaint and give them the option of doing that. So, we actually, you know, I won't say we go and ask people to file complaints, but if we have an indication, maybe they shouldn't file a complaint, we reach out to them and make it, provide the necessary tools to do that, and give them the option of where they can go to do it also.
I appreciate that. I see that you even take complaints through Twitter. I don't know, I find funny, but maybe it's not. But it seems to be an indication that you're looking to eliminate impediments that may be out there, so, thank you.
So, I want to congratulate and thank Bobby and Kelly for delivering such an intelligible report that's clearly the result of some hard work. I just want to quickly respond to my colleague's comment about accessibility. I think the recommendations, as I understand them, come in three buckets, changes to policy, change to procedure, and then change to- change to procedure, and then change to wording. And I think your comments about making the complaint process more accessible, and maybe making it less of a, making people less concerned about availing themselves, or that comes with some of the changes in wording, and then some of the changes in policy. So I'm thinking particularly around the general neutral and terminology changes, but also the recommendation to ensure that there's translation of some of these materials into languages other than English, so that some of those individuals who, whose proficiency in English may be limited, or maybe have no proficiency, can avail themselves of this process. So with that, I do think that there's a lot of good recommendations in here. There's also a lot of substantive recommendations, and some things that, speaking just for myself, I think I would like to hear some public comment about, and some, hear some people weigh in on, and I don't believe we noticed this at a public hearing, and would suggest perhaps that we formally do a public hearing at some time in the future, just to make sure that everybody who wants to be heard on this has an opportunity to weigh in, and we get the benefit of diversity of viewpoints and a lot of feedback.
I think that's a good idea. Is there, Mr. Rosenthal, would you care to speak, knowing that you're going to have an opportunity at some other time in the future to weigh in on more specific details, and we have three public hearings ahead of us after this?
And knowing that we've, and knowing that we've received your written comments.
Yes, I'm very gratified.
Much time reviewing them.
Yes, I, well, put that aside, but I'm gratified to hear that there might be a public hearing, although that hasn't yet been decided, but the suggestion, I don't see anybody shaking their heads. Let me just give you one example, with the kind of stuff that, I've just seen it tonight, changing the title. I think that the old title had some purpose, the changes in the ABC complaints. Lieutenant Campbell has given me a good argument tonight, outside, why that's a good idea, but I'd like to think about it some more, since I've been a proponent of that since 1987, so I'm happy to hear what you're thinking of doing, if you end up doing it, and I appreciate that that might happen.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, yeah.
One thing, so we're going to eventually be asked to approve a general order, including this. So, and we have the revised policy, I guess it's a general order-
Right, this would be a-
-in our packet. It would be useful to have a red line copy indicating where the changes were made?
I thought we had sent that over.
Pardon?
I believe we had already sent that over at some point.
Yeah, I don't, you know, we don't, apparently didn't, so we'll make sure that we'll do that prior to the public hearing.
Okay, so let's, let's probably shoot for sometime in September, we'll be back on our normal schedule, though in September, we're going to be meeting on Thursdays. Everyone's unnoticed, we're meeting on Thursdays in September.
Oh, is that-
Jewish holidays.
Jewish holidays, and then Election Day is the first Tuesday of the month. You missed the memo, I guess.
It's just the usual Tuesday, actually.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else? Well, thank you very much. So there'll be one more iteration, and then hopefully, depending on public comment, we'll be prepared to vote it.
Okay, and I just want to thank Bobby Niall and Kelly Race, they put a lot of time in this, multiple meetings, a long time within the office with Lieutenant Campbell. I said they did, you know, yeoman's work on this, I appreciate it.
I think we should give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're now ready for the item 14, which was noticed for eight o'clock. We're about 38 minutes late, so let's, let's go to it. So this is a public hearing on the All Kinds Package Store Liquor License Held by Chestnut Hill Group LLC Doing Businesses Wine Gallery, and the question is whether their license should be modified, suspended, revoked, canceled, or not renewed for the 2019 annual licensing period. This is a public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 3064, to determine whether the Select Board, as the licensing authority for the Town of Brookline, should modify, suspend, revoke, cancel, decline to renew with set conditions precedent to the renewal of the All Kinds Package Store Liquor License issued to Chestnut Hill Group LLC Doing Businesses Wine Gallery Spark, based on a charge that has maintained an inactive liquor license in violation of Section A 11 of the Town of Brookline's Sale of Alcoholic Beverages. The notice of this violation, hearing dated June 27, 2018, was delivered by mail and email to Igor Ostrovsky, the resident agent. It's Exhibit 1 to this hearing, and is incorporated by reference into the minutes of this hearing. This hearing is being recorded by our recording secretary. Who's here to present the case in support of the charge?
Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Counsel for the Town-
Is there anyone here representing the licensee?
I spoke with Mr. Ostrovsky on the phone yesterday. He said that, based on his situation, his understanding of what I would be recommending to the board, he would not be attending. He did indicate on the phone he was satisfied with the notice, and he's not contesting the violation that his business is currently maintaining an inactive liquor license.
Right. Notice an empty storefront right now. Are there any exhibits to be marked?
None, other than Exhibit 1, no.
Okay. We'll take evidence and hear from the parties in two phases, first being whether or not there's a violation, and the second being the appropriate action by the board. Mr. Simpson, are you prepared to present the case in support of the charge?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, like I said, I spoke to Mr. Ostrovsky and confirmed what we already knew, which was that Wine Gallery Spark on Washington Street is currently closed. My understanding is their lease was not renewed, they don't own that building, of course. Mr. Ostrovsky indicated they are in the process of looking for new space, but as of right now, they are no longer, weren't running that, and because the liquor license is, of course, tied to a particular locus, it is therefore, they are in violation of our regulations by duty inactivity.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Simpson?
How long has it been inactive?
We're not certain, I didn't, I didn't ask when I had him on the phone, but I know we've, you know, the notice is sent out almost a month ago, so it's before then.
It's, we observed it about five weeks ago.
It hasn't been too long. It is a pretty prominent location, just blocked from here, so I know, I pass it a lot.
So it's a viable business, they just couldn't get their lease renewed.
My understand-
And I ask that because I hope they find some other location in town, because it's a unique business, but-
So Mr. Ostrovsky indicated that he's, you know, he's experienced in this business, he's, you know, he's, and is very much looking to remain in Brookline, looking at a number of spaces. I indicated that the problem was not just the lease running out, but also that it was simply too much space. If you've ever, if you'd ever been in there, it was considerable, which is why it went from, I believe, Wine Gallery to Wine Gallery Spark. But, so he's looking for sort of smaller spots, but I believe he, I, he maintained that his business would certainly be viable if he can find the right spot for it.
Okay, any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, now is your opportunity. I see none. So we'll now decide whether or not the licensee is responsible for the violation with, with, with which it is charged, and then we'll turn to the question of what, if any, action the board should take in the event it finds a violation. I will make a motion for a finding of, that a licensee is responsible for the violation described in the hearing notice dated June 27. All those in favor of a finding of responsible party in charge of maintaining an inactive license in violation of Section A 11 of the Town of Brookline's Sale of Alcoholic Beverage Regulations, say aye. All those in favor? Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we have found a violation of our liquor regulations. We'll continue with the determination of the appropriate action. Mr. Simpson, do you have a recommendation for us?
I do. As I mentioned before, Mr. Ostrovsky is looking for new space, that search is ongoing. Based on that, he's hoping to come back to the town with a application to have his liquor license transferred to that new location when he does set it up. I think that dovetails nicely with our standard practice in the case of an inactive liquor license violation, which is to give the license holder six months to either indicate that they have restarted the business, or transferred the license to someone else. I think we can fit in coming back to us with an application to transfer the license within that, so it would essentially be, my recommendation is that you vote not to renew his license for the calendar year 2019, unless he, within the intervening six months, comes forward with evidence that he's, that he's, either with an application or evidence that he's about to apply for a transfer.
Okay. Comments on the recommendation?
Would that application be based on an actual lease that he has?
It would need to be, yeah, I believe he, I'm not, I'm not exactly certain of the requirements, but I think he does have to have a property interest in the, in the new space.
So I think the six-month standard practice is reasonable in this case. I will note that it's sort of backed up on ABC case law, so I think we could go longer, but going shorter would not be a fruitful exercise for us.
Okay. So, and then if he activates the license at another location, he'll have to come back to us for transfer, for that new location?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So in any event, no matter what happens, he has to come back to us?
Yes. The hope here is that it would just, but, you know, you could, if he does nothing, then this would be the last you'd need to hear.
Yeah, this is a vote to revoke in the event that those, doesn't happen within that six-month period, just so you know, or not revoke, but not renew.
Not to renew, yeah.
Okay. So the motion is that the board refuse to renew the license if prior to the end of 2018, the licensee is not either, A, activate the license, or B, obtain Select Board approval to transfer the license to a new Brookline location, or to a new licensee at the same Brookline location. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think we caught up a little bit. So the next public hearing is on the application of Brookline Dining Group Doing Businesses Hamilton at 1366 Beacon Street to extend their business hours until 2:00 a.m., Monday to Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, well, it's 2:00 a.m. from 1:00 a.m., basically, that's the, and then Saturday and Sunday, open an hour earlier. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am Shayna Duff, I'm an attorney at the Law Office of Robert Allen, 300 Washington Street, here in Brookline Village, and I'm here tonight representing Brookline Dining Group LLC Doing Businesses Hamilton. Here with me tonight are three of the owners, Greg Johnston, Aidan Johnston, and Dave Ferrando. Dave is also the manager of record. And we are here to seek, as the chair just said, a change of hours from the current hours, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., to open at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday, until 2, and until 2:00 a.m. on Monday through Friday. And you may recall that the applicant was previously here in February for the grant of the transfer of the license, and at that hearing, they had hoped for a 2:00 o'clock license, but the application was messed up, and it wasn't noticed correctly, so they took your advice to open, see how it goes, see how the neighborhood feedback went, and then come back and reapply for the 2:00 a.m. license. So they opened at the beginning of May, and they have received support from the hotel. We have a letter from the Marriott, as well as signatures from over 30 surrounding businesses looking for them to extend their hours. They currently offer a late-night menu until 12:30, and that would be the last order at 12:30, and they would extend that to 1:30 if they're open until 2:00 a.m. I have samples of that menu, as well as the letters. In addition, they have worked with Lieutenant Michael Raskin and the Brookline Police Department to be informed on the Brookline regulations, as well as added three alternate managers to their license.
Okay. I'll note that there are at least three other establishments within a two-block radius that are open till 2:00 a.m., the Pluche Corner Clubhouse, Hobson Scotch, and S&R Hospitality, that's the new, that's the place that went into the lineage space. So this isn't unique to the area, it's commercial, it's kind of the commercial heart of town. There are some residences above some of the stores on the other side of the street, and then there's an apartment building, like a 14, 15-story apartment building directly across the street. But this is, it's an urban location, a very active urban location.
And there's nothing, no noise coming from Hamilton that's going to bother any of the surrounding neighbors?
Right.
Well, it's not a question, it's a question also of whether, you know, customers are drinking at that late hour, and come out, and they're not, you know, inebriated and noisy. So as long as you know that it's your responsibility to prevent that.
And we've not had that experience yet. We get a lot of people from the hotel that flights get in late, and that's what the support letter attests to. We have a lot of people that, they like the spot, they like to know that there's late-night food and within walking distance to the hotel.
We don't want people to be inebriated in the streets at any hour.
We also get a lot of people from restaurants that close earlier, coming in for just one or two drinks after their shifts.
Sure. This is a public hearing. There are members of the public who wish to speak on this expansion of hours. Now is your time to speak in favor or against this. I see none, which says something.
So I'm actually going to abstain on this, and let me explain why. So we give out 2:00 a.m. licenses somewhat sparingly in this town, notwithstanding the chair's point that there were three establishments in relatively close proximity that have 2:00 a.m. licenses. There are not a whole lot across town. This establishment, which by everything I hear is doing very well, has only been open for a really pretty short amount of time, and there have been some extremely minor conversations between the liquor officer and the establishment. So I would like to see a little bit more of a track record before giving out what I consider to be a pretty rare commodity, 2:00 a.m. license.
Well, let me, let me make sure that I'm correct, that we would be reviewing this-
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year, so that if we have, I mean, that'd put you on notice, that if we have any complaints or any issues with the police, or any of that kind of thing, we would be reviewing it at the end of the year, and for potential modification.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with this, given the location, the lack of neighborhood objections, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Given it's within walking distance of my house.
Well, politics is local.
Okay, so I'm going to-
I'm not going to be there at 2:00 a.m., I'll tell you that.
Maybe tonight.
If you try our food, maybe you will be.
Nice.
Well, if our, if our meeting lasts long.
Yeah, we may need it.
Walkable from here, also.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we approve the application of Brookline Dining Group Doing Businesses Hamilton, holder of a seven-day All Kinds Alcohol Beverage as a common vitula license at 1366 Beacon Street for change, and alcohol service hours of Monday to Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., Saturday, Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Abstain.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Ooh, and I do have one unrelated question. I heard something about brunch when you guys were before us.
Yes, we will be set to- Yes, we will be set to pilot that in August, beginning of August, in lunch, August 5th. Come on by.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. And we have one more restaurant-related item, and this is a question approving the application of Phoenix Rising Enterprises Doing Business's Best Burger Bar for change of operating hours. And this is actually to open for breakfast, I believe. Opening Monday to Friday, 6:00 a.m., going to 11:00 p.m. Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And Sunday, 8:30 to 10:00 p.m., 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Yes, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm John Masha. I own Best Burger Bar.
Howdy, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Tell us what's going on.
We're going to open up for breakfast, trying to capture that revenue stream. There seems to be a lot of foot traffic. We're right in the pathway to the tee, so we're going to give it a shot.
Okay. Sounds like a good thing to try.
What would be unique about your breakfast as opposed to the other breakfasts in that area?
I mean, I don't know how unique it'll be. We will have a burger breakfast sandwich. I mean, I have a preliminary menu. I, I don't know that it's going to be that unique. It's going to be breakfast sandwiches, pancakes. We're going to introduce a full line of vegan veggie burgers as well. That'll be breakfast or lunch, and that's about it. And some grab-and-go items like parfait, yogurt, things like that. All local breads.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, but if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, this is your chance. And I see none. Any, any other questions, comments from the board?
I just want to make the point that differentiate between the operating hours and the liquor service hours. So my understanding is that we're talking about changing the operating hours. Liquor service hours will remain the same, which are Monday through Thursday, 11:00 to, a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday, 11:00 to 1:00, and Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 to 1:00 a.m. And I'm hesitating because I thought during the week, alcohol service couldn't commence before noon, but I don't know.
I think it's 11, but I could be wrong. But the Sunday, the, the Sunday does require a brunch license. I don't know if we've done that. I just don't have that paperwork with me.
It's a, I think it's an automatic approval from the A B C C. They just have to provide notification to us. But it's already on the license, so.
Okay.
I think that's happened.
Okay. So with the note that, from select person Franco, that all we're doing, we're not changing the alcohol service hours, I will move that we approve the application of Phoenix Rising Enterprises LLC Doing Business's Best Burger Bar for change in hours of operation from Monday to Friday to Monday to Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday, 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you, it's almost over.
Yeah. Okay. So the last item, we're actually, I predicted we'd be starting at nine. We're starting at five, four of nine, so coming in four minutes early.
Claim victory.
Okay, so this is a public hearing and review of a Transportation Board appeal action, which was received on July 2nd from petitioner Harry Friedman, who I see approaching the podium, regarding a Transportation Board decision of 6:20 to place a stop sign at the intersection of Claflin and Garrison Roads. Mr. Friedman, tell us what's happening.
I will. I'm Harry Friedman, resident of Claflin Road and town meeting member from Precinct 12. And the issue involves a proposed stop sign approximately where the cursor is, but it also involves Winthrop Road, which is over on the far right of your screen. The general intersection area is a problem for a number of reasons. It's a problem because cars coming up Winthrop Road from Beacon that are going to take a right onto Garrison have to swing so far onto Garrison that they end up in basically the wrong lane on Garrison. Cars coming down Winthrop, going towards Beacon, that want to take a left onto Garrison, are generally going at a relatively fast rate, and they take the corner because there's no stop sign or anything on Winthrop. They take the corner very fast, and it's, it's a safety issue. Cars that are already on Garrison that want to take a left onto Winthrop, especially the ones that come down Claflin, often end up so far over to the left on Garrison, they're kind of in the middle of the road, before they take the turn onto Winthrop. And the final problem is that pedestrians coming down Claflin, if you are on the left side of Claflin, and you're crossing to get to Beacon, you generally cross right here. And you're sitting in the middle, standing in the middle of the road, sort of a, a dead duck, especially for the cars coming down Winthrop that are taking that left onto Garrison. The people who are on the opposite side of Winthrop, or of Claflin, basically cross right there. So they can see a little bit more, but again, the cars coming down Winthrop are coming down at a fast speed, and it causes a safety issue. These are the basic problems with this intersection area. And at the urging of a neighbor who is here tonight, I had suggested to the Transportation Board that they look at, I think I said, the intersection of Claflin and Garrison. Unbeknownst to me, somebody else in the neighborhood had already suggested that they take a look at Winthrop and Garrison. So that after my suggestion, when it appeared on the agenda of the Transportation Board like a week later, I was pleasantly surprised that it happened so fast, but then realized that it happened as quickly as it did, mostly because this previous request to take a look at Garrison and Winthrop was already going to be on the agenda, and Transportation Board staff went out and looked at the intersection again, and they grouped them together. So when the Transportation Board first discussed the, a proposed stop sign at Garrison and Winthrop, and I'm imagining the stop sign would be approximately there where the cursor is, everybody in the, in the room, in the audience from the neighborhood, sort of thought, well, it, it's not a bad idea, it might help, and, you know, fine, nobody opposed it. Nobody really thought it was the greatest thing since sliced bread, but nobody opposed it. We then got to the proposed sign on Claflin, which I imagine would go approximately right there. Claflin is a one-way going down the hill. And there, the audience reaction, and my reaction was, I'm not sure this helps a lot. The problem really isn't at Garrison and Claflin. The problem is with Winthrop. And this doesn't really solve the problem. And given that the sign at Winthrop and Garrison is going to be new, let's put that sign in, let's see what it does, and we can revisit this later. So I asked the Transportation Board to kind of table it. And they said, well, staff had already recommended the stop sign go in, and they took a vote, and they've decided to do it. And so we, we decided to appeal. If you're coming down Claflin, you basically have to stop anyways, because you come to a tee, and to go either left or right on Garrison, you've at least got to come to a sort of a, a slow roll before you take the turn. The feeling is that the proposed stop sign on Claflin doesn't solve the real problem. It doesn't really make things a lot safer, because again, the cars coming down Claflin have to slow and/or stop. And from a somewhat selfish point of view, we're going to lose one to three parking spaces, probably two parking spaces when they put the sign up, because right now, people park on Claflin all the way to the Garrison line. And if they put a sign where the cursor is, you're not going to be able to park, I believe it's 10 feet or so in front of the sign, and you're not going to be able to park behind the sign. And these are two spaces where people currently park. And parking is at somewhat of a premium, because we're near the Brookline Mental Health Center, and their employees park on all the streets, including Claflin. So we are asking, not that this never be instituted, but that it does not be instituted now, that let's give the sign on, on Garrison and Winthrop, let's see what happens. And maybe we should really be looking at ways to make this intersection work a little bit better, which might include, for instance, a white line in the road there to show people where to stop, and that the line would extend to the center of the road so that people coming up Winthrop would know they can't go too far on the wrong side of Garrison. And it might prevent people coming down Winthrop who are taking that left onto Garrison. If they see the line, they may realize that they have to slow down, because there could be a car there. So I'm, I'm not a transportation expert, there are probably other ways that this could be done, but again, the problem is at Winthrop. The problem is really not at Claflin.
Okay. Mr. Corain, or someone from the Transportation Board?
Hello. Ashley Hare, member of the Transportation Board and licensed...
This is your maiden voyage.
It is, it is. And licensed professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts. So I come to this as an engineer and looking at it based on the analysis that town staff have done, which I agree with. And we based our decision on the Transportation Board on two basic premises. The site distance at the location where Claflin comes into Garrison Road, and also on the assignment of right-of-way at this location. There are federal regulations and rules about traffic control at intersections and the criteria that must be satisfied for various types of traffic control. And in this case, perhaps there's some history or story behind it, but there was no traffic control for Claflin Road at this intersection, nor are there traffic control devices in place for Garrison Road as they approached Claflin. So with the first point, the site distance at that location, as the, as was just mentioned, people tend to stop at this location anyways, because they can't see. The requirements to put in a stop sign are based on how far you can see when you look right and when you look left to see any oncoming cars. And this location satisfies the requirements for stop control. It does not satisfy the requirements for an uncontrolled stop, as is out there currently, and it does not satisfy the requirements for yield control if a yield sign were put in on Claflin instead. In this case, it would have to be a stop sign. The other point is assignment of right-of-way. When you come to this location, it's not clear who has priority over whom. And in this case, Claflin Road is a minor road coming into a collector's street, and so Claflin Road naturally should have the more stringent control, again, the stop sign. So I defer to Todd and, and the memo that I think you've got a copy of, but that was the Transportation Board's stance on the decision.
So Mr. Friedman described that people are parking all the way up to the corner, and he described that this is kind of a hazard for pedestrians. I would be concerned if somebody's parking all the way up to the corner, that that would impede visibility as well.
That's another great point. And he's correct that putting in a stop sign will limit parking by one or two spaces in this case. Cars do tend to block visibility of pedestrians who are trying to cross the street, whether crossing Garrison, as he described, or crossing Claflin Road. And that's where we normally would put in what we would call daylighting, which is where we prevent any sort of curb infringements so that pedestrians can be seen at those spots.
This might be for town staff, but are we going to put markers down to follow on the, the stop sign? The white that usually accompanies?
Yes, yep. So what we are doing is we are programming both the stop sign and then what's called the stop bar, which is the white pavement marking that runs perpendicular to the travel lane that starts at the stop bar, a stop sign, and then works its way out in order to clearly identify where the vehicle should come to a stop. And we're programming that for both the Garrison at Winthrop sign, which was passed that same night, and provided the Transportation Board's decision is upheld tonight, we'll be doing it at the Claflin Road at Garrison Road as well.
Thank you.
Are you, are you thinking of putting in pedestrian, pedestrian crosswalk to make it clear where pedestrians should be crossing? Does that make any sense?
So a pedestrian crosswalk wasn't requested at this location. I believe there are curb cuts there, which is standard at most and almost all intersections within town. We do have curb cuts that can be used, but not necessarily a marked crosswalk. It is something that we can look at compared to what's the requirements within the D P W crosswalk guidelines, and then bring that to the Transportation Board for a vote. But the installation of crosswalks do require a vote of the Transportation Board, but it is something based on this board's recommendation that we can look at.
How about that line in the middle that Mr. Friedman suggested at Garrison, on Garrison guide the turns?
So Garrison generally, currently does not have either a double or a single yellow line, which divides the traffic. We could look to, with the stop sign at this location and the stop bar, we could look to put a double yellow, not necessarily the entire distance, but some footage back in order to guide the cars coming down Garrison or down Claflin to the correct location.
Okay. Any, any other questions from the board before I open it up? Okay. Anyone else from, any from the public wish to speak? Come on, join the party. Don't be shy.
Anne Meyerson, I live, I live on Ross, and, and I'm sorry, we started this whole can of worms. I think, I think Winthrop is the real problem. I don't think that, and Harry didn't mention, when you're coming up Winthrop, when you take a right, it's a blind corner, that's such a sharp curve, that that's a real issue. If you're trying to cross the street there, cars whip around that way, too. To me, it makes much more sense, it may not be state regulations, but to have stop signs on Winthrop either way, if you want to make a turn. The, the Claflin, Claflin to Garrison doesn't, has never been a particular problem.
Okay.
Good evening, Eric McNulty, 21-year resident of 20 Claflin Road. So a lot of experience both driving and walking through that intersection. And I would just say that I fully support Mr. Friedman's suggestion, we table this for a year. In 21 years, I don't recall accident problems there. It is a difficult area to navigate, but I, what I would like to see is rather than a piecemeal stop sign, stop sign, maybe we should think about a crosswalk, maybe about a line, a comprehensive look at that intersection, to say what's really going to work, rather than a piece at a time. So try the stop sign, see what happens. Again, it has not been a problem, as Ms. Meyerson just said, coming down Claflin, you pretty much have to stop. And to have to stop twice within, what, about 30 feet, seems a bit redundant. And so I respect the, the opinion of the traffic professional, but I, what I would really love to see is try one sign, and in the meantime, take a look at that entire intersection, because there's lots of things that are issues there. It's not fun to drive, it's not fun to walk, between parking and the speed and everything else. And let's get a comprehensive view at it, so we're doing it once, rather than doing little pieces one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Howdy.
Hello. Diane Dalton, who's a resident at 11 Claflin Road. And I would tend to agree with Mr. McNulty, that it seems to me that the Winthrop Road is the problem. People are flying through there, and it's very dangerous to drive, walk, and everything coming up that road. It is even at the intersection of Beacon Street, for that matter. People don't even stop at that crosswalk that's there. But adding a crosswalk, people can't see, so by the time they see you coming around that corner, I don't think it's going to work. work without them stopping on Winthrop Road and slowing down. So, I would agree that this, that seems to be the problem, not the Claflin Road to Garrison Road intersection.
Thank you. Come on. Come on up. Don't be shy.
Hi. My name is Annie. I also live on Claflin Road. I agree with Mr. Friedman, because when I drive down Claflin Road, I always stop when either I make a left or make a right. But sometimes when I, let's say, if I take Uber from work, so the Uber driver don't know the area, so they always like passing by the Claflin, the Garrison Road, because they can't see the sharp turn at the Winthrop Road. So, that's my personal feeling.
Thank you. Mr. Crane, the suggestion about putting the control on Winthrop, what, did you guys look at that?
No, we did not look at it for a always-stop sign for Garrison and Winthrop, but we can do that. But that's a separate intersection from Garrison at Claflin. You would still, even if you had an always-stop here, here, and here, you still don't have the sight lines for the Claflin Road vehicles coming down here. And as the neighbor said, those familiar with this intersection already come to an almost stop or stop. Our concern is Uber drivers, Waze drivers who are cutting through the neighborhood, they're approaching this not knowing about this intersection, not knowing Garrison Road's coming, and not knowing Garrison Road has a heavier volume. And there, as the speaker just said, they come right in and right through. And that's the concern that we have.
Could I ask a question of Mr. Crane? Is it correct, does state law say basically that when you're coming to a T like that, either you yield or you stop? Is that correct?
So, it depends on which is the major approach and the minor approach. The minor approach is supposed to yield to the major approach, but drivers coming down Claflin Road don't necessarily know that Garrison is the major approach.
Right.
And the problem is, is that they don't have what's called either, you look at either an uncontrolled, a yield-controlled, or a stop-controlled for those types of intersections. And for uncontrolled, there's not enough sight lines for cars coming down Claflin Road traveling at the speed limit to see approaching vehicles on Garrison Road to make that decision to stop in enough time if there is.
I see.
Also, for yield control, you'll actually see in the memo that was given to you, the pictures for a yield control location, sorry, that, you'll actually see for the pictures of the yield control location, which would be a yield sign, is that it's approximately at this location here, where the car still cannot see the oncoming vehicles from the left, nor from the right. Only with a stop control is there enough sight distance to see the vehicles coming from your left on Garrison Road.
So, in other words, in order to comply with federal and state standards, we really need a stop sign there?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I really just want to add that we never complied with federal or state standards, and the only reason they looked at this, the only reason they looked at this was because I had asked them to. If I had known about the other stop sign, I would never have asked them to. This whole issue would never have been before us.
Be careful what you wish for.
I know. Because they were not going out proactively at this intersection, or any other intersection, to put the stop signs up.
Maybe we should.
Well, that's where we disagree, Ms. Heller. But, and to tell you the real truth, that section of Winthrop between Garrison and Beacon should have been made one-way years and years ago, because especially in winter with the parking situation there, it's too narrow. And when the town went and changed all the turnarounds on Beacon, both here and closer to the Star Market, they made that solution far less possible, which really was too bad.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Sure. Come on up.
I'm a resident of 20 Claflin Road. My name is Anne McNulty. I support Mr. Friedman. I support this petition. I've lived there for 21 years. I am also an avid walker. I drive everywhere, too. This stop sign is going to be stupidly redundant on Claflin. It will serve a purpose on Garrison Road for traffic calming, and so people can see and stop appropriately. It's going to cause major confusion if it's at Garrison, I mean, if it's at Claflin as well, because as Mr. Friedman said, it's only a number of feet away. And this isn't Grand Central Station there. It's a busy intersection in a little, small way, but it is not Grand Central Station. And this whole thing has been overthought and overworked, and it, one stop sign is plenty in the area.
Okay. So, I'll remind the Board, anyone else wish to speak? Okay, so I'll bring it now back to the Board. I'll remind the Board that the only issue before us is the sign at Garrison and Claflin. The Winthrop intersection is not before us, so it's a very narrow question. So, what do we think? Yeah?
Yeah. So, if we uphold the Transportation Board, the sign at Claflin and Garrison can be reconsidered at a later date.
Oh, of course. We can also suggest without, we could suggest for the study of Winthrop Road, if that's what we wish. But I-
So, upholding the Transportation Board doesn't set anything in concrete. We can begin thinking about this.
It's a stop sign.
There'd be a stop sign, which can always be reconsidered.
Usually concrete, yes.
So, any thoughts?
I would just say that approaching an intersection and not having any signage is confusion.
Yeah, I was over there today. Take a look around, and I appreciate comments someone made that if you don't know the air and you're coming down Claflin Road, that you don't, there are no visual cues as you hit Garrison that you're on the minor approach. And then, the statement I've heard a number of times is people who live there kind of always stop, maybe it's a rolling stop, but they know to slow down, and, but we can't, we can't assume that everybody knows the neighborhood. That's very, that's very unfriendly.
And very dangerous.
Right. So, my inclination is to defer to the traffic professionals and the Transportation Board on this one. So, that's the way I'm thinking.
Well, I, you know, I do have a concern about these roads that lead into a T. And I've been in other places and seen, you know, people totally ignore it. They just whip around the corner and, you know, and it feels dangerous, and it feels like it could be dangerous here. What really speaks to me is the fact that we have these federal and state standards, which we're not meet, which we're not meet now, and I'm serious. I think we should meet them all over town. I would hope we would. And I'm, you know, surprised and, you know, that we don't meet it here, and I think we should. And I can understand that people think it might be an inconvenience. On the other hand, if it does protect a pedestrian, or somebody else, or a bicyclist, or someone else who's coming along the street from some, from an accident, because the person on Claflin's going too fast and whipping around the corner, then it's worth it. And since the neighbors basically say they stop anyway, which is a good thing. You're not admitting to lawlessness. So, yeah, I think we need to, as select person Green has said, we can always revisit it in the future.
I will observe that this is one of the intersections examples, the problem of having roads that were laid out in, you know, 1657. Like, if this, this whole scenario was not ideal. There's far too much real estate between curb-to-curb on Claflin at Garrison. I maybe could get on board with necking down that intersection, making it visually, adding some visual cues to make it clear that you've got to slow down and approach that, that intersection more judiciously. You know, I think Winthrop is a little bit of a disaster, particularly in the winter. I've made the observation at the intersection of Beacon and Winthrop, that frequently that last space on the eastbound side of the street is occupied by a delivery truck, which I'm sort of of two minds about. You know, on the one hand, it pulls a delivery truck that would otherwise be double parked on Beacon Street off of Beacon Street, and allows for the free flow of traffic. But on the other hand, it makes that sight line terrible. And particularly if it's a two-way street, and you're crossing over from westbound on Beacon Street over the T-tracks, you can get sort of stuck in the middle there, which is not ideal for a variety of reasons. So, that's all by way of saying, there are some difficult intersections, some difficult conditions here, and I, I think we need to do something. And the question before us, as the chair reminded us oh so subtly, is Claflin and Garrison. And, you know, having gone out there on Saturday and Sunday at a couple of different points during the day, I am convinced that there needs to be a stop sign there, if only because I witnessed what I suspect was a private delivery vehicle for a major web retailer tear through that intersection several times. I observed private vehicles which had Lyft and Uber stickers on the back tear through the intersection. So, the argument that, you know, we're residents of the neighborhood, we know that you've got to approach the intersection carefully and come to either a slow rolling stop or a complete stop is valid, but there's a lot of other people coming through the neighborhood now that don't exercise the same degree of caution.
Okay. Anyone else? So, I'll move, my motion will be to uphold the Transportation Board. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.